Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. This council thanks you for being part of city council and city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that, may I get roll call?
Yes. Council members Brown.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protan Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present. And with that, would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And moving on to our next item on the agenda, item four, Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members, an item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Item A, Approval of Meeting Minutes for March 6th, 8th, and 13th. Item B, Bills and Communications to Approve the Claims in the Total Amount of $6,892,909.54. Item C, Ordinance Number 4644 and Resolution Number 4318, Budget Amendment and Bid Award for Court Street Overlay, Road 44 to Road 68, and Court Street Overlay Phase 2 Projects. Item D, Ordinance Number 4645 and Resolution Number 4319, Budget Amendment and Bid Award Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Phase 2A. Item E, Resolution Number 4320, Acceptance of 2023 through 2028 Parks and Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. Item F, Resolution Number 4321, Project Acceptance Center for Parkway Widening. Item G, Resolution Number 4322, Setting a Public Hearing Date for Empire Bros. Construction Right-of-Way Vacation. And with that, can I get a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move item E regarding the Parks and Recreation and Open Spaces Master Plan to item 9D for further discussion.
Okay, there's a...
I would second that.
There's a motion and a second.
Do we need to take a formal vote on this, Mr. Ferguson? Moving an item off the consent agenda, or is that by individual consent?
Nope.
Great. With that, I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Campos. And can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Campos.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Milne.
Yes.
Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Maloney.
Yes.
And Mayor Barajas.
Yes.
And it passes unanimously, thank you for that. Next item on the agenda, item four, Proclamations and Acknowledgements. We actually do have two proclamations. There are two proclamations tonight. The first proclamation is proclaiming March 2023 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. And I'll be stepping down here, but I'd like to call Cindy O'Neill. Cindy O'Neill, the Executive Director of Arc of Tri-Cities, Valerie Clark, Goodwill Industries, and Paul Singer, Director of Tri-Cities Residential Services. If you can, please come forward. And if you'd like to step over to the mic. I'm so sorry. We're going to read this proclamation, thank you so much for being here today. Proclamation, Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, March 2023. Whereas, a month of March, the month of March has been designated Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month by a 1978 presidential proclamation. And whereas, more than 83,000 adults and children in Washington State have developmental disabilities. And whereas, families and caregivers of people with developmental disabilities deserve recognition for their caring commitment and ongoing support that are essential to an independent and productive life. And whereas, public awareness about developmental disabilities promotes acceptance, understanding, and decreases prejudice and misconception. And whereas, people with developmental disabilities have many skills, talents, and abilities to contribute to their neighborhoods and communities. And... And whereas, the City of Pasco and the Greater Tri-Cities annually celebrates people with disabilities at the March of Respect, this year being held on Saturday, 25th, in Richland. And whereas, people with developmental disabilities are a vibrant part of our community. Improving the quality of life for all of us and public awareness about the needs of people with developmental disabilities can help Pasco be a more welcoming community. And now, therefore, I blanch Barajas Mayor for the City of Pasco, Washington, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. And with that, do you have any words that you'd like to share?
Just briefly, thank you. We spend our lives advocating for the inclusion and acceptance and rights for people with developmental disabilities, and we appreciate this mayor, the acknowledgement of the declaration, and we hope everybody will come out and join us on Saturday for the march. It's at John Dan Plaza at 11:00 a.m.
I was just going to remind of the time start, but Cindy took care of that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And we do have a second proclamation. Will Angie Pacheco, Domestic Violence Services of Benton Franklin County's Executive Director, please come forward? It doesn't look like she's in the rooms. So we do have a proclamation that we're going to read. Hopefully she gets here as we're reading. Proclamation, Women's History Month, March 2023. Whereas, in 1978, the Sonoma, California School District organized a week-long celebration of women's contributions to culture, history, and society, giving presentations at dozens of schools where hundreds of students participated in a Real Woman Essay Contest and held a parade in downtown Santa Rosa. And whereas, in the years that followed, many communities, organizations, and school districts began organizing their own Women's History celebrations. And whereas, the United Nations began observing March 8th as International Women's Day in 1975. And whereas, in 1980, President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring the week of March 8th Women's History Week. In 1981, U.S. Congress passed a resolution establishing the national celebration, and in 1987, the recognition of Women's History was extended to an entire month, March. And whereas, during the month of March, we celebrate the contributions women have made to every facet of life throughout our nation's history and to pay tribute to the battles that have fought in the name of equality. And whereas, in 2023, the 2023 theme, celebrating women who tell our stories recognizes women past and present who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling throughout power of communication, gave voice and strength to women's collective triumphs, struggles, and communities. And now, therefore, I blanch Barajas Mayor for the City of Pasco, Washington, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Women's History Month.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas and council and City of Pasco. We really appreciate this. We work hard in our communities towards women's rights and protecting women from domestic violence. And thank you so much for honoring us today.
That was a lot of reading, but we have some more reading to go on. Okay, so again, thank you, everyone, that was here representing your organizations and being open-minded to allow us to bring awareness to not only the developmental disabilities some individuals go through, but also bring awareness to Women's History Month. So again, thanks, everyone, for being here for that. Moving on with our agenda, item six on our agenda, Public Comment. The public may address council at any items, on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizens' comments will normally be limited to three minutes, but because of the size of this crowd, we will limit it to two minutes. You will get a notification 15 seconds prior to your two minutes, just to remind you to wrap up your comments. Those with lengthy messages will be reminded and invited to summarize our comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. Again, I would like to remind everyone to be, please be mindful of your two minutes, be respectful of everyone else's comments, and I would also like to invite you that if you have any media, to please keep it in the back of the room, refrain from bringing that to the front of the chambers. And with that, I'd like to invite anyone with a public comment to step forward. Please state your name, your address, and please be sure to have signed in into the public comment list.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I did sign in. Charles Grimm, Pasco, Washington, 4321 River Haven Street. You guys, here we go again. It's been going on for like a year. As I said a few weeks ago, you guys, I was proud of you guys for the compromise you made. After vacillating back and forth, you have an opportunity again to come together and give the public their say on this highly contentious issue. I encourage you to approve Resolution 4327, giving the residents of the City of Pasco a say in whether the culture of their city is fundamentally changed. You guys, you're going to have people lined up on both sides of the issues, many of which may not even be residents of Pasco or Franklin County. I believe it's the right thing with a big change like this, let your citizens have a say-so as is being forwarded in an advisory vote. Thank you for your time.
Again, please state your name, your address, and be sure...
Lawanda Hatch, Pasco, Washington. I hope that you all read my emails. I could tell by the last meeting some of you had not. What is a peer review? It is the check to scientific studies. If you have a conflict, you can't get peer review. Did you have the good controls? Can it be replicated? Examples of things that have not made peer review, the COVID shots effectiveness or safety, face masks stopping the spread of aerosolized viruses, and all the paid-for-by-big marijuana propaganda and fake studies espoused last time by Mr. Maloney. Examples of things that have made peer review, ventilation destruction and delusion as the only way to mitigate aerosolized viruses, face masks cannot stop the spread of aerosolized viruses, marijuana is addictive, and marijuana stunts the frontal lobe of the brain up to 25 years old. Those are peer-reviewed scientific studies. These are some pictures of candies. These are all marijuana. These are now all legal in the state of Washington to be sold at marijuana stores. They all replicate children's candies. I cannot tell the difference, can you? Could your children? I can tell you this, these candies are not marketed towards adults, they're marketed towards children. You say it will bring a lot of money, it will not be near enough. All the money in the governments do not build a strong nation. Families do. Children do. They are the foundation of our nation. Drugs of any kind... How many minutes?
15 seconds left.
Drugs of any kind do not... And what is the difference between alcohol and marijuana? They both have the same addictiveness, but it is the destruction of the stuntness of the frontal lobe in children. Protect our children, keep them far from the cliff, keep them far from drugs and drugs that replicate candy. Thank you very much.
Please state your name, your address, and be sure to have signed in at the back of the room.
John Rose, Pasco, Washington. Do you want my address?
Yes, please, for the record.
2912 North Road 48. Is that what you want?
Thank you.
I'd like to share with the council. My mother died at age 69. CPOD, CPOD, tobacco. My father, cirrhosis of the liver, age 60. My sister, age 57. Drugs, alcohol, smoking. My brother, age 55. Alcohol, cirrhosis of the liver. My stepbrother, alcohol, smoking, took him at age 55 as well. I share that with you not to... I share that with you because of the fact that some of you may be under the understanding or impression that drugs, alcohol, smoking, and these addictive substances have no harmful effect on anyone. It's just something you'd do behind closed doors. That's a very naive and uninformed position. Everything that you do affects everyone else. We're a community, we're a family. We may not be living together, but what happens in my house affects your house and everyone else's. If we can't put the genie back in the box, let us vote at least and find out how our neighbors feel. That gives us the opportunity to say, do we want to be part of this community or not? Do we want to raise our children here or not? Let it be voted upon.
15 seconds remaining.
And please, push it to the extremes of hard to get, because this is very harmful to many, many people. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am. Sir, she had her hand raised first, and then it's you, and then you.
Good evening, Mayor Barajas, Council. Dana Crutchfield, 8914 Whipple, Pasco. I believe I've addressed you prior to this as a medical professional regarding all of the issues that you've heard about the medical and the safety concerns that many of us do have concerning cannabis. But here tonight, I want to say that I believe that the council is elected to represent the interest of the entire community, not just those who they come in contact with or those who speak at a city council meeting, nor for those coming at the bequest of Mr. Morgan from other cities to voice their support for a business in a city in which they have no stake. Recognize the current ban on retail cannabis in Pasco was put in place by the council based on a 60-plus percent no vote opposing cannabis sale in Pasco. A small survey sampling regarding this issue was done months ago, revealing a split. On a matter so divisive for the community, the council should not impose a significant change in public policy on their own split vote. As Councilman Roach stated in the 36th council meeting while voicing her, quote, "Frustration that the council has a duty to communicate clearly with the public, and we have not done that as a collective group. Our duty as a council is fair representation of what Pasco wants," end quote. Councilman Serrano stated that an advisory vote, quote, "should have been taken long ago," end quote. Corporate America frequently uses advisory ballot process when their boards refer issues to their shareholders. Results aren't binding, but they do provide a meaningful basis for subsequent decision and action. That has not been done here. Rather, council should exert leadership, place the matter on a citywide ballot for all Pasco voters to determine if current policies should change. If the voters say no, the job of the council is done. If they say yes to cannibal sales, the council may determine. Councilman Maloney mentioned at the 36th council meeting, this is, quote-unquote, "a rights issue." That is true. The right to vote is the most fundamental right you should respect. If you choose not to continue the current cannabis ban, adopt Resolution 4328.
Your time is up. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. And then, gentlemen, Matt raised his hand. So go ahead, sir, and then...
Eric Larson Gleed, Washington. I actually don't have a big canned speech today. I just want to come up here and say thank you to all the council members that allowed us the opportunity to debate this issue. It's been a really spirited debate. There's information on both sides that you have to weigh out. I believe that you all are empowered to weigh that out, that you don't have to take every issue and go back to get advice from the people that actually elected you to come back and make decisions like this. I believe you guys are put in these positions to make these decisions today. An advisory vote would be an extra cost to the county, to the community, that's not unnecessary. I believe that an advisory vote would probably yield the same results that we've had from, I don't know, two listening sessions, multiple council meetings, a survey that was a representative sample of Pasco residents that resulted in a 50-50 vote. I believe it's still going to be split by the time you get to August or November and that vote is cast. You're going to have to come back here and make the same decision again. I believe you guys have all the information necessary to make this decision tonight.
Actually, gentleman here, glasses. And then Carl and gentleman with the yellow hat.
Hello, council. Anthony Contreras Sanchez, former Pasco resident, just moved to Kennewick. But I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for the proclamation around Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. As far as I can tell, you guys are the first city to make that proclamation this year. I encourage you to continue the momentum, attend the March for Respect this Saturday, as well as look out for more information later on in the year around National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month. I would like to see not just Pasco, but the entire Tri-Cities and Benton Franklin County area really get behind the efforts to employ more people with disabilities.
Carl Holder, 402 West Lewis. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm really blessed and I give thanks to my abundance in life with great family and friends, and I really appreciate this council's deliberation and my gratitude to Mayor Barajas for her courage and leadership in this matter. COVID completely destroyed retail business in the building in downtown Pasco at 402 West Lewis. And so, I started my consulting to look at retail cannabis as an opportunity for this store, and everybody that I talked to said it was a fantastic idea. So fish on, landing a high-volume, long-term destination business is every owner's dream. Yeah, I have great optimism for the revitalization of downtown Pasco via your support of the Pasco Downtown Development Association, and DPDA is supportive of the store. Some would show up at Old Ark 30 and acting like bullies. Councilmember Brown admonished receiving threatening emails. David, with his nonstop camera clicking, is provocative. You deserve better than that. The advisory vote is, as they would say in Spanish, "menyaña" in the indefinite future used to indicate procrastination. Listening sessions were ordered, and you have heard from the community in open forum. So vote no. Respectively request, this council move and approves the motion to approve Resolution 4328 to allow the retail sale of marijuana.
Hello, my name is Michael Graham, Pasco, Washington, 4405 Benton Horse Lane. I am not only a resident of Franklin County, I am a cannabis farmer. I employ people who live in Franklin County. My money goes to Franklin County. Everybody's money here does not. It goes to Benton County, to where the pot shops are. We are here to do a simple thing and give the people what they want. I support Resolution 4328. Thank you so much. You guys have a good day.
Gentlemen in the orange shirt. And if anyone else wishes to address chambers, if you could raise your hand, I can acknowledge that you're coming forward. Just one, two, three. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, city council, again, my name is Luke Mellenbacher. I am the precinct committee officer of 54 in Pasco, over in the county. I live at 4007 Galway Lane. Again, I'll come back again and say, federal says no. It is completely illegal. People that have an FAA license to fly drones, pilots, CDL operators, completely illegal for you. You cannot have it in your system. You are randomly drug-tested monthly, if not quarterly, by the federal government to maintain your license, and you have to have a medical card on both instances to be able to fly a drone that carries packages over 50 pounds or drive a semi. Or even drive a 10-wheeler without your CDL as an agricultural thing, you just have to pass that and your medical card. No, don't let it come in here. We already said it before.
Thank you. Lady with the cellphone.
Dear Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Terri Henricks, and I'm David Morgan's mom. Please pass Resolution Number 49... Sorry, 43? 4328. I got to put these on. I gotta put these on. Pasco has waited too long and waited long enough. Thank you for your consideration, and thanks for all your hard work, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, lady at the far end. There's one, two, three hands, and then I'll go to you, sir. Far end. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
I oppose cannabis shops, so I guess I would approve the resolution forty-three twenty-seven. People should always come before profit. I lost a nephew who started using marijuana in high school, which led to harder drugs. He was killed while high, walking in the middle of the highway. I currently have another nephew, teenager, battling marijuana addiction. Here's some facts. The American Society of Addiction Medicines, the American Cancer Society, the American Glaucoma Society, the American Academy of Pediatrics report no documented medical value in marijuana. The British Medical Association found marijuana increases health risk. According to the Institute Institute of Health, one in six youth who use pot will abuse it and become addicted. Institute of Medicine says ten percent of youth who try it become addicted. Teens are twice as likely become likely become addicted than adults. Students do worse in school. It lowers IQ, results in more dropouts. Today, one in fifteen seniors use pot daily. Long-term studies show pot smokers have higher symptoms of bronchitis and emphysema. Increases depression, anxiety, mental illness, affects mental capacity and driving. Pot-related traffic deaths more than doubled from two thousand thirteen to two thousand sixteen in Colorado. There will always be people who make bad choices. Let's make it as hard as possible with our laws to discourage that. We have a drug, crime, homelessness, and a mental health crisis in this nation and in this state.
Fifteen seconds remaining.
The council should be, should not ignore advice from local law enforcement and medical studies. That would be reckless and irresponsible. It would be time then for us to elect new council members. I work at Chihuahua. Ninety-five percent of students in a health class say their greatest concern for their classmates is drugs and alcohol. If to alcohol and tobacco-
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to remind everyone, I'd like to remind everyone to please be mindful of the two minutes. We have a large group. There's a lot of you that want to speak. One more reminder, if you, if you could please turn off your cellphones. If you absolutely need to take a phone call, please step outside. There's another hand down here on the right side at the far end, gentleman at the far end of the room, and then ma'am here.
Hello, my name is David Dilworth, five oh five North Road Forty. I'd like to present the city council with petitions that have been signed by concerned citizens that are against the legalization of these stores.
If you can hand those over to our clerk. Thank you. Thank you, um, ma'am. And then gentleman here with the mug.
Good evening once again. Michelle Andries, fourteen twenty-one North Road Seventy-seven. We are here again because unfortunately someone changed their vote. They claim procedural. Roberts rules are a guideline. They're not legal. They are technical. But a vote was taken, and these two groups came to a conclusion that they could live with an answer. Once you changed your vote, we got another call that we were racial. All these people in this room are now being called racial because they put the industrial area as far away as possible from the young people. And the frontal lobe, by the way, is the judgment part of the brain. The judgment part of the brain is what you have to have to be an electrician, a CDL driver, to be a policeman, and I didn't appreciate the comment that people will always get pot, they'll, they'll always get a hold of it. Well, then they can always do murder and rape and burglary and assault and child neglect and child abuse. That is not an acceptable stance from our leaders of this community. We must try to protect the most vulnerable, which are the poor and the and the youth. So you've made an excellent case for not bringing in any of these pot shops. We have for almost a decade said no, almost a decade. Now we're at five years. I did not also appreciate the use that we were discriminating against the business because discriminating in the same law said that the cities could choose that legalize this. And I don't hi- I don't hold the Washington State legislators as the highest in the land on making law. And so I do choose to stand in front of my grandchildren, who are friends of yours, to say no.
Fifteen seconds remaining.
In conclusion, I do not like, I do not like the fact that we continuously listen to people that are trying to treat things that need to have medical oversight. That is a different situation altogether, and there's not a person in this room that doesn't have compassion for those that need those kind of treatment. Recreational marijuana does not bring that, and the city doesn't need it. Thank you.
Thank you. One last comment. One last comment.
Hi, thank you. I'm going with my independent journalist name, Willie Wilson, tonight from Pasco. Quick update, rundown on one-seventeen after a year of process or more of what was taken to adopt resolution forty-three oh three. It, it, almost two months later, um, there was, it was time to begin work on the adopted resolution on March sixth. However, on that day, several notable events occurred. The agenda item, an agenda item was quietly removed from the record. Happened to be the official adoption of the resolution. A public commenter thanked the council for removing an item from the record. That was the first I heard of this. So what we're talking about here is, I was listening for the first mention of it by the council. Councilmember Roach brought it up, item, agenda item ten, unfinished business, that she removed it. Because it was brought as a technical and process issue, this is important because that's why you rescind. Not because you got confused, but because there's a technical and process issue that might run into problems later. Um, and that there might be a breach of Roberts rules, which turns out was not the case. So skip ahead, agenda item twelve, nobody left in the building, eventual rescind. Okay, it was mentioned by another community member at the most recent community council meeting and by another council member that the timing and process seemed shady and underhanded. By removing the adoption of the resolution from the agenda, then waiting until the end of the meeting without any prior public notice, except one dude apparently, my trust was breached. Let me be clear, I don't trust you. That's not how you operate a city. So, um, and Mayor Pro Tem Maloney clutched his pearls, expressed his outrage over the notion that anyone thinks there was collusion among the city council. That's not what was, uh, the thing. I'd like to point out that this is nowhere near what logic would dictate. City council members will secretly rendezvous, hold extracurricular ex parte meetings to do more city work? No. Someone in the private sphere of the mayor got to the mayor. There was two months, and at the last minute, they decide that, uh, we're going to go ahead and change this up. So that's either naive or purposeful red herring, so I can't trust you either. So, uh, y'all, I don't know what to tell you. Uh, there's more to say, but because of the truncated-
Fifteen seconds remaining.
Timing, I'm going to post some things online, hashtag Willie Wilson, hashtag tricities wha.
Thank you. There's one more comment back here. Was there a hand raised back here? There's one comment back there.
Good evening. Uh, hello again. I'm Brian Marino, resident here in Pasco, and hopefully you all received my email regarding special meeting on three thirteen regarding the comments made relative to the tri-city animal shelter. There's really only one comment I came to address in person tonight, and that was Mayor Pro Tem Maloney's comment about not wanting to be yelled at for two hours. I'm actually on your side on this one, because it's not my preference to spend nights and weekends combing through transcripts, looking through research, developing resources, that ultimately get ignored by this council. So please, again, I would encourage you to implement a shelter or the advisory board within the existing boards and commissions office with the right stakeholder voices represented at the table, and we can all have our time back. Thank you.
Thank you. There's one, two, three more.
Jesus Arturo, eighty-three oh four Wrigley Drive. How federal weed legalization would impact Washington State? The Washington State Legislature is pining ahead to potentially make a lot more money on cannabis sales. A proposal gaining momentum would prepare the state to jump into interstate commerce. If and if and anywhere Congress approves pot nationwide, it would happen anytime, and Senator Ann Rivers' Senate Bill Fifty-Sixty-Nine would allow Washington to enter marijuana import-export compacts with other states immediately after Congress gives the green light. If the federal changes happens before the legislature acts, Washington could have to wait months until the legislature meets again to vote to allow interstate compacts. If we're not prepared to commit on nationwide scale, we're going to be left in the dust, Rivers said. This bill passed the Senate Wednesday on a bipartisan vote of forty to eight, and now moves on to the House. At a January tenth hearing before the Senate Labor and Commerce Committee, Vicky Christoffersen of Washington Cannabis Association said Oregon and California have already passed similar laws. What we don't want is other states to get ahead of the start, she said. Currently, thirty-nine states in Washington DC have legalized medical cannabis. Thirty-nine states in Washington D have legalized medical cannabis, and twenty-one states in Washington DC have legalized recreational marijuana. And these legal state marketplaces act most like an island and import-export other states are not permitted, says attorney Tom Tobin, whose practice includes some emerging marijuana issues. It's especially exciting to-
Your time is up.
Thank you. Your time is up. Go ahead, ma'am. Actually, there was a lady here waiting to speak, and then the lady right behind you.
Hello, I'm Valerie Landon, and I'm a director of the Half Fire Animal Rescue Team, also known as HART. And this here is Zazu. This is a hard situation for him. He's never been in a situation like this before. But I wanted you to see him, because if it had been up to the deciders running the shelter last October, he'd be dead. He was labeled aggressive. He was barely a puppy, at least barely full grown, and scared out of his wits. And they labeled him aggressive. And look at him. We understand that sometimes euthanasia may be unavoidable. We understand that the shelter has limited resources. But the shelter's budget is nearly triple what was allowed to, uh, the, the contractors who ran it before. I just don't believe that they can't afford to involve independent experts in the decision to euthanize a dog because it's, because it's aggressive. And I don't believe that they should decide to kill a dog without reaching out to rescues to ask for help. And I also don't believe that our shelter, which exists to serve our community, should be less than transparent about these decisions. The fact that a dog has bitten somebody isn't on its own a good enough reason for euthanasia. The shelter environment is scary for a dog.
Fifteen seconds remaining.
The handlers may not be as skilled or experienced as they need to be. I'm not saying biting is a known never mind, but context matters when you're deciding whether to stick a dog with a needle. And it should never, never be a quick decision. So how are these decisions being made? Who, apart from the-
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
At the very least-
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time is up. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Angela Zeiler, six zero nine five Collins Road, West Richland. In your workshop last week, there was a couple of comments that were made that were kind of disturbing. We're not here to yell at you. We're here to ask you to help us make a difference. One of the things that I think that is why the community is so upset is what it is, is for twelve, well, from two thousand seven to two thousand twenty-one, the contractors had a set of duties and responsibilities, which I will leave for you, because I don't know if any of you have ever seen them, which our policies and procedures were based on, which we did have. Twenty nineteen, Zach had them. He told you that he, we never had them. We did have them. But we based those on these, and the community became accustomed to having the services that these duties and responsibilities obtained. Lastly, from two thousand eight to two thousand nineteen, when I left March thirty-first of two thousand nineteen, we took in thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eleven dogs and cats. That's two thousand eight. I'm not including the two thousand seven numbers. I left at a budget of seven hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, and I did all this work. I did not get the complaints that are coming to you right now, and I did it on half the budget. And I think that you guys need to understand that-
Yep, fifteen seconds remaining.
And at least acknowledge the community's concerns. Thank you.
Any further comment? Any further comment? Gentleman in the blue shirt and someone else over here on the left. There's two on the left.
Lolly Martinez, forty-one oh four Prairie Lane, Pasco. I have seen Pasco probably longer than most of you. I have seen Pasco be a eloquent city. And then as time went on, it was changed to where it wasn't a good city. And there's been people that have been working to get it back up on its feet. And all of the sudden, things just don't go the way that they're supposed to, for some reason. I support fourteen twenty-seven. I want to see Pasco back the way that it used to be, back when I saw it, back where I grew up in it. Having this business here is not great for Pasco, in my opinion. I do understand that there's people that do need this, but not here. So if y'all can't vote for it, let us do it. Let us incur the cost. We'll vote for it. Thank you.
There's a lady over here on the left side, and then the gentleman back there.
Donnie Pitzer, um, currently in Yakima, trying to relocate to Pasco. Uh, I talked two weeks ago from my medical marijuana consultant standpoint, but I've sat here and I've listened to the argument over and over. I've watched the online meetings over and over when I wasn't able to attend, and this has been rehashed over and over. I'm watching really important things going on in this city that are getting overshadowed because everyone feels so strongly about this. This was brought to a vote. It was fifty-fifty. You bring it to a vote, it's going to come back fifty-fifty. It's going to land back in your laps. Um, I heard someone point out, you guys were appointed to this position to make these decisions. You put that preliminary vote out, you got your response. It's going to come back to you. You're going to be rehashing this again, and then in six months, this is going to be coming up again, and you're going to have all these same people standing up here again, saying the same things, giving you the same reports and the same statistics. I vote, or I say that you guys vote forty-three twenty-eight and and let this go. You've listened and you've heard, and if you look at your constituents in the room, the majority are for. The ones that are against are rehashing the same comments and the same statistics. We're- The ones that are against are rehashing the same comments and the same statistics. We're bringing you new facts. We're bringing you new things because it's constantly emerging market, constantly emerging scientifically. We're bringing new things because it's what we've got. The old stuff is outdated. The reason that the old stuff is so old is because this has been knocked down by the federal government, and these studies have not been updated in years, in decades.
You have fifteen seconds remaining.
These updates are coming out. The exportation stuff is coming out. Aside from the money, your constituents want this. You want to bring businesses in. You're going to bring more constituents in. You're going to bring people in that are going to bring businesses and job opportunities for more of your people. Forty-three twenty-eight.
My name is Roger Scaire. I actually live in West Richland at six four two zero five Grover. I'm not a citizen of Pasco, but the reason that I'm here is I am a member of the Tri-Cities community, and it's my hope that the Pasco City Council will lead the way and make what I feel would be the right decision to allow a cannabis store in Pasco. All of the cities, not just the Tri-Cities, all the cities in America are facing a lot of turmoil, a lot of trouble, a lot of dangerous things right now. And to be honest with you, I don't think cannabis stores anywhere near the top of that list. As council members, you are tasked with making very difficult and important decisions all the time. That's your job. And it's my hope that you make your decisions not based on your personal convictions, but based on what you know or what you feel to be in the best interest of what the community members have expressed to you. And so I just want to say that I support cannabis stores in Pasco.
Any final comments? One last comment.
Good evening. My name is David Ramirez. I reside at forty-one twenty West Nixon. I am a Pasco resident. I do pay my tax dollars, and I'm very proud of you guys and your decisions that you have to come across. This is very nerve-wracking being up here, but what I want to say is that, like the gentleman said earlier, here we are again, taxpayer money. And we have a local family business that's been stated here and has been stapled here in Pasco since nineteen ninety-three. And to see the pandemic that's going on, marijuana was an issue, yes. Like the lady just said, old news outdated. New news is what we need to look at. We need to look at, focus on what's going on at hand right now. We see, we had a lady that stated last, the last statement, or the last meeting stating that Prozac, our pills, were the key. Well, we see what's going on. We have a zombified nation going on. We have people that are on the streets. They're not on marijuana. They're on other stuff that's harsher than what we need to look at, and that's the problem that we need to go on. What I'm saying, though, is that I motioned to move approved Resolution of four-two-three for the city to move forward, to make a resolution, because, like they said, you know, I know some of you guys have your minds made up, and this is where it's at, but most of you guys know, and gals, excuse me, know the situation at hand. And I hope we make the right decision and move forward and seeing the potential good that could come out of this. And like they said, the-
Fifteen seconds remaining.
The gentleman said in the meeting, the council member, that he's done his homework. The homework's been done. It's there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. That was our last comment we were going to listen to, so we'll move on with our agenda, moving on to item number seven on the agenda, reports from committees and/or officers. Are there any reports from any of you?
Mayor Barajas, what about the online? There was an online person.
We do have an online comment. Is Mr. Steve Baumann online?
Not listed. He's currently mayor. Not showing.
Is Mr. Robert Carrasino online?
Mr. Carrasino is online. He wants to speak to the Parks Master Plan item, which has been pulled and moved to item nine D, so I guess it's- We can do it during public comment or during the item.
We can go ahead and listen to his comment.
All right, Mr. Carrasino, you are unmuted and can comment.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me talk about this matter. I believe the city clerk has given you a written comment email that I sent in this afternoon. I'm asking you not to provide consent to the Parks Master Plan because I believe it is inadequate and did not adequately consider the need for a new community waterfront park in the new northwest area of Pasco. I have been talking about this need for a long time. There's going to be forty thousand, up to forty thousand, new people coming into the town that will be creating essentially a new city, and there's no waterfront park anywhere north of Chihuahua Park for these forty thousand people that most will be living north of Interstate one-eighty-two. In the response to the comments that I submitted on the master plan, the preparers stated that they had considered a community waterfront park in this area, but they had rejected it because there were limitations due to the fact that the Corps of Engineers owns most of the land along the river in that area. That's an inadequate response. I've lived in the Tri-Cities for fifty years. Every city, including Pasco, has waterfront parks that use some portion of Corps of Engineers' land for the park. This new waterfront park would only require a small portion of the Corps of Engineers' land because it would be located somewhere to the south of Burns Road. The area to the west of Shoreline Drive is very narrow, so it's not a lot of core land. It's not used for the mitigation purposes of the core, like the river bend area further to the south in the same area. And the response that was given is not an adequate reason for the park. People to have not further considered this matter, and you owe it to these new future citizens who don't have anyone else but you to assure that there's proper planning for all the people that were coming in to let them have access to the jewel of the Tri-Cities, the Columbia River, through a new community park. If you'll take a look at the comments that I submitted on the draft park plan and take a look at the shorter comment that I submitted today to you, you'll see that this is not an undoable project. The city is already talking about moving Shoreline Road further to the east. If it were moved further to the east, the existing ten-acre Corps of Engineers parcel that is already east of current Shoreline Drive can possibly be used, and land to the north of that could be acquired. And it could be acquired in such a way that both the city of Pasco residents and the current landowners will benefit because they will be able to develop mixed-use projects right up to the edge of the new park that you developed there. I also have a visual that I could provide to you. I sent it to the city clerk, but I don't know if it got to you, but it shows how a-
Mr. Carrasino, you have fifteen seconds.
That's what I'm asking.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
We have moved this item to- nine D. So if you'd like to stick around for further comment at that point, you're more than welcome to. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number seven, reports from committees and/or officers. Do we have any reports from any of our council members having attended any meetings or events? Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. We are actually going to make an amendment to our agenda, and now we'll hand that over to Mayor Patamaloni.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move up item number ten, unfinished business, the two unlabeled resolutions. I'd like to say move those up to item, up in front of nine A, to allow us to give an opportunity to talk about this while we're still all fresh. Nine A. Eight A is for hearings and council ordinances. So because it's not a hearing, I was thinking that it would be most spoken on nine A.
So just for a point of clarification, I think the proper way to handle that would be to make a motion to move in the agenda to unfinished business and handle that matter now, and then we go back on track with the agenda.
Where would you like me to, you'd like me not to suggest an agenda and just say move it to right now?
Yeah, let's not move anything. Let's just make a motion to move to the item number ten, unfinished business, and handle that now. And then, once that's done, we'll be back on track.
Great. I move to reschedule item ten, unfinished business, in front of item eight. Hearings and council actions and ordinances resolutions leading there too.
Okay, so- Do we want to go with the roll call vote on this one? Let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Roach?
We are moving to this item, simply moving this item, and that's what we're voting on, looking for a point of clarification there.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, this is confusing.
Yes, I vote in favor.
Serrano?
Yes.
Campos?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Milne?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
And Barajas?
Yes. And it passes unanimously. Therefore, we will be visiting item ten A, unfinished business, section ten A, resolutions number forty-three twenty-seven and forty-three twenty-eight, related to retail sales of cannabis. Director White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This item needs very little introduction. Obviously, there's two motions on, in continuing your gender report. One is for consideration of placing the island on an advisory ballot during the primary election season, and the other direct staff to accomplish the proper code revisions that would enable the PMC to allow retail sales of cannabis.
Thank you. I'll direct to our council. Are there any further questions or comments on this item? Councilman Serrano?
So, for the form of this, are we going to take this one at a time where we're going to first address whether or not forty-three twenty-seven, and then assuming that moves one way or another, then we'll address forty-three twenty-eight? So fundamentally, a segmented vote. Just want to make sure that we're clear to everyone and we're clear to ourselves. Thank you.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, the first item on the agenda is forty-three twenty-seven, so currently, that's the way it's structured, but you could certainly move it if you would like.
Any further questions, comments? Mayor Patamaloni?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. I will be making a motion, I'll be making the motion to approve forty-three twenty-seven, but before I make that motion, I want to clarify that I do not support forty-three twenty-seven. I think we've heard plenty from the community. We've heard from hundreds and hundreds of people. We've had our, the community survey. It's been very clear. We are still a divided community, and I believe it is our responsibility as this council to make a decision. So I believe that pushing this off to an advisory vote is going to create unnecessary churn in the community and ultimately not help this council come to a decision. If the community is divided, as we've seen, then what we'll see is that we will come back to us, and if it was a close vote, we're still going to have to make a decision. So what we do other than kick the can down the road? So I'll be making the motion for form to allow this council to take a vote. I think that's the right and proper thing to do to make sure that this council has an opportunity to decide first. Do they want to, do we want to put it to an advisory vote? If we choose to, my intention would be to vote to table the next resolution. And if we do not approve the resolution, then I'll move on to what I believe is my preferred resolution, which is the approval of a direction of staff to draft an ordinance to allow the retail sale of cannabis. So I'm trying to be very clear on what exactly I'm standing for and where I'm at because I believe that the community desires and deserves a very clear position from this council at this time. So that's where I stand, and if there's any other, I'd hold for any other questions or comments. Otherwise, I'm happy to make a motion.
Are there any further questions? Councilwoman Roach, and then councilmember?
Just a question for staff about retail license, retail sales of cannabis license in the city of Pasco. How many total can there be?
Four.
Four total within the city limits?
Within Franklin County.
Within Franklin County. And is there any distinguishment between city and county on that? So all four could be in the city of Pasco?
They could, yes. And three of them, I believe, are spoken for.
Do we know about the, it's just not been applied for, or?
It's been applied at the state level, which doesn't necessarily care about what we do here locally. They'll grant a license provided the applicant meets their requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, comments?
I suppose my, I'd like to just add a comment, and that is synonymous with what I have said before, which is we have drug out an item which I think we have collected a lot of public comment on, two public listening sessions, dozens of city council meetings over the course of months. And I do not want to put more barriers in front of three business license holders with another advisory vote that just comes right back to us to then make a decision. And so that's what I've said before, and I've said it again, and I'm saying it again now. So that's, I'm letting my council know where I'm at.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, advisory vote versus just placing on the ballot for a vote from the people. Where's the difference?
There is no distinction.
I just wanted to make sure. A lot of questions came this week, so thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Councilman Serrano, and then Councilman Milne.
Director White, does that, number four, address any of the social equity permits that may or may not be issued?
Number four is supposed to, and right now, I could not tell you the particulars of how they're addressed.
Okay. Do we know whether or not there are additional allocations from the social equity program that could be forthcoming?
I do not believe there are, but that also may be an item that will need further clarification.
Okay. Mr. Ferguson, you have, I see a head nod.
Yeah, so that is, as Mr. White is, I think, making clear, that is a very up in the air situation right now. So we keep getting correspondence from Social Equity Office that's been created. So most of those correspondence, or most of that correspondence has been related to the current open licenses that we have or that would be allowed in Pasco or Franklin County, that would be allowed to go to other locations based on the social equity criteria that they may come up with. So it's not clear yet how that's going to actually be implemented, but there is a significant push to address that particular issue, both currently, and then I think there's some legislation that's also going to add to it.
Thank you. Yeah, my position hasn't changed. I've long been a proponent of utilizing the advisory vote process to help us pulse all of, or the overwhelming majority of public, not those who can make it on a certain night or at a certain time or at a certain location, aside from, you know, to the mailing box within a week and a half time. So my preference would have been to do this years ago, but here we are now, so I think we still need to put it to the votes of the people.
Thank you. Councilman Milne?
Thank you, Mayor. When I look back on the history of America, I think some of the best things, what makes us such a great nation, is that we've let everybody vote. I mean, all through our history, it's not been just a small group of people that make all their decisions. I mean, I know we do vote our leaders, but on the big issues, whether it's the president, the people that we send to, you know, Congress and it, everybody gets a vote, and I believe this issue is going to impact Pasco for the next fifty- And I believe this issue is going to impact Pasco for the next fifty years, hands down, I mean, once it's in, we're not getting rid of it, I mean, it's not gonna, once you have a distillery, uh, you know, a pot shop, they're there to stay unless some, I mean, they are, they are to stay, so. As far as the kids, I believe, we'll put it to a vote, let everybody decide, every voting citizen in Pasco should get a, a chance to, to weigh in on this. And that's my, uh, that's my thought, and I'd hope the other council members would go along with my decision.
Any further comment? Councilman Campos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I've spent a lot of time traveling around, uh, all of Washington, been here since nineteen eighty-seven, which it's probably not as long as some of you, but it's longer than others, so, um, I've got to see a lot, I've seen a lot, just this last weekend, I took a long road trip down, um, the highway, and I went down through Stevenson, I went through Lyle, I went through Carson, right off the side of the highway, there's a high-fived marijuana shop. And it's a really nice building, there wasn't people lined up, it was, you know, there was a leprechaun run that weekend, kids were out running right next to it, like, you know, and that community is arguably much smaller than ours, um, probably more tight-knit, and some of the concerns that are being raised, that you would think you'd see in other communities, simply don't exist. And, and I'm not talking just about Stevenson, I, again, I saw it in Lyle, I saw it in Carson, I saw it in Nooksack, Washington, I've been all over this state from the northeast corner to the southwest corner and crisscross the other side. Now, the hard part of that is, you know, when we look at what the oath we took as council members, and I was listening to that probably several times on the way home, and what I swore to was uphold, to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, to uphold the Constitution of the State of Washington, and to enact those duties unbiasedly and fairly, to the best of my ability. The US Constitution, the Tenth Amendment says that anything not covered under the Constitution should be determined by the state and or the people. Where we're at right now is in a tough situation, because a lot of these people want to have their voice heard, a lot of these people are willing to overlook the cost of what an advisory vote costs and have their voice heard. On the other side of that, we have a lot of people here, a demographic that has not made their voice heard, simply because they're too young to care. Looking at the eighteen to twenty-five year olds, there's a lot of them there, and I would wager that they would probably tip this in a certain way. Now, that also being said, democracy is not a basketball game, you don't vote once and win, and that's the end of it, democracy is a game that never stops playing, so, you know, this council may decide that this thing dies here, but the council after us might pick it back up. That's just the way democracy works, um, we're not a theocracy, I don't care about what your religion says, and, and I'm not supposed to incorporate that into here, but that doesn't mean that I'm not listening and paying attention to every single one of your concerns and trying to weigh it equally as everybody else's. I've heard people talk about how, how dare somebody come up to the podium and voice concern and how we're not lis-, we shouldn't listen to them because they want to bring a marijuana shop in, but yet you want me to listen to your voice because you don't agree with it, every, everyone's voice matters in this community. It wasn't a business owner from outside of the area, it's a business owner that brought this up, but this issue is larger than him. I understand the ramifications that if we don't pass this tonight, that it could cost some of these businesses money. It's not about his business, it's about the city of Pasco. And it's not a money grab, you know, for a lot of people against this, keep telling us that you guys are out for money. If this were a money grab, it'd be a no-brainer, we'd, we'd be in the green. Why have we talked about this for a year, or more? Why have we kept kicking it back over and over again, because we look at everything as unbiased as we can with this current council, and this is not an easy decision. I'm gonna lean heavily on the oath I gave when I took this appointment, I'm gonna lean heavily on the things that I've seen with my own two eyes. I understand peer-reviewed data, I also understand that back in nineteen seventy, when Nixon made this a class-one drug, he had this studied, and it was ignored, but the advice of the people that he had study it, he chose to classify it as class-one drug. I'm gonna lean on what I've seen with my own two eyes, my heart, my mind, and my oath, that's it.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, um, thank you, everyone, for your, um, input, your information, your, um, well-researched and extensive thought into this, I appreciate the staff, um, allowing us to further educate ourselves, further be able to contemplate what we're doing, but again, um, piggybacking on Councilman Campos and everyone else's consideration. We've been talking about this for some time, we've been listening to everyone's voice, both sides, all sides. Um, and ultimately, we are here to do right by what we swore to do. We are here to not decide what business is right or wrong, but we are here to allow business. Um, we're here to allow all your input to help us decide how to move forward, whatever that decision may be. Um, that's all I have to say. Um, we do have two motions, uh, for this, so I'll turn it over to, um, Mayor Pata Maloney to read those motions.
If you don't mind, Mayor, can I read the first one? I move to approve resolution number four-three-two-seven, requesting the city staff to draft a resolution requesting the Franklin County order to place a proposition for an advisory vote on the next primary election, asking voters whether the regulation of retail sales of cannabis should be allowed, or if the current ban on cannabis retail activities should continue within the city of Pasco.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Serrano, and I'd rather get a, a roll call vote on this.
Councilmembers Milne?
Yes.
Roach?
No.
Serrano?
Yes.
Campos?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Maloney?
No.
Barajas?
No.
So that's three to four, and it's opposed. It failed.
Thank you.
I move to approve resolution number four-three-two-eight, requesting the city staff to draft an ordinance to amend PMC twenty-five dot ten dot zero-two-zero and PMC twenty-five dot eighty-five, PMC twenty-five dot ninety, PMC twenty-five dot one hundred, PMC twenty-five dot one-one-five.
Council, sorry, just one more, I, I need you to add PMC twenty-five-one-twenty, it seems to be missing, missing from that motion, so I need you to add that right after one fifteen.
Is one-two-zero?
PMs, PMC twenty-five-one-twenty.
PM, PMC twenty-five dot one-two-zero, and PMC twenty-five dot one-two-five, and any other necessary adjustments to city code as, um, as, um, as required, to allow the retail sale of cannabis in the C-one, C-two, C-three, I-one, I-two, and I-three zones.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
I will second that, seconded by Councilwoman Roach, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmembers Milne?
No.
Roach?
Yes.
Serrano?
No.
Campos?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Maloney?
Yes.
And Barajas?
Yes.
And it carries with a four-three vote.
Thank you. It is eight-twenty-three, at this time, council will take a five-minute break to return at eight-twenty-eight. Thank you, councilmembers. We are now back to item eight A, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there too. Um, first item A, public hearing twenty-twenty-two, comprehensive plan amendment docket. Director White, do we have a report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, I'll just, uh, right now introduce our planning manager, Jacob Gonzalez, uh, tonight's, uh, agenda item refers to the public hearing portion of our cyclical comprehensive plan amendments. There is no decision expected of council on these amendments, as council well knows by now, I think there are sixteen separate amendments. And, uh, again, the purpose of tonight is to, uh, entertain public, uh, testimony and comments.
Thank you, now, um, Mr. Gonzalez, before I, uh, give you the, uh, space, um, before I open a public hearing, um, I would like to provide the following instructions, planning manager Gonzalez will provide a brief introduction to the twenty-twenty-two comprehensive plan amendment docket, which consists of sixteen, uh, different proposed amendments, as Director White mentioned. After the public hearing is open, Mr. Gonzalez will summarize, uh, each application item one at a time. Um, I will invite then the applicant, if attending, to the lectern to provide comments. Um, then I will open the floor for any public comment, limiting their time to three minutes or less, however there's a request, or, um, because there's translation, um, I would like to remind, um,
It it was an application to not correct necessarily any errors, but to make it more conducive with the land use that was already surrounding it. And and it met all of the these two parcels met all of the criteria that were set forth in the Comp Plan Amendment. So. What was that? Okay. Thought that was my buzzer.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Anyway. It it. We've just gone through a whole long process that for something that the client is anxious to open up the possibilities for the person to for the client to use the property according to what the rest of the surrounding properties are using it for. So it's. It it seems like it's a slam dunk, but I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Second call for anyone wishing to speak on this item. Third and final call. Hearing none, does council have any questions or comments on this item? None, if you'd like to go to the next one.
Thank you, the next item is CPA twenty twenty-two zero zero three. This is a future land use amendment from industrial to mixed residential commercial. They cite as approximately one hundred ninety-seven acres. Determination of significance was issued in June of the of of twenty twenty-two on this proposal. Staff has expressed concerns on both the application proposal itself, along with the associated draft environmental impact statement which was issued earlier this we're in the fall of twenty twenty-two. And EIS, a final EIS has not yet been issued by the city. The city is the lead agency and the city is the author of of the final environmental impact statement. Staff is still working with the applicant and their team to identify concerns that staff has expressed about the proposal predominantly focusing on the compatibility of increasing residential households within the immediate adjacency of large industrial freight-based users. The impact on those future residents and the impact on future industrial employment in the area based on the nature of the proposal. Staff does not recommend approval of this application based on the criteria mentioned earlier this evening not being in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Sir, if you'd like to state your name and address for the record. If you can turn on your microphone. The the one with the little man speaking, thank you.
Yes, I'm Ralph Brochi, seven sixteen Sunset Drive in Burbank. Yeah, thank you, council members, for taking the time to consider our proposal. I'll bore you with a little bit of history. My wife Cheryl and I started farming in Benton City on a on a small orchard in nineteen sixty-nine. In nineteen eighty, we moved down to Fish Hut Park on the Snake River and started planting trees down there. We ended up. Ended up planting about seven thousand acres of apples and cherries. So that's my passion is farming. Growing apples and cherries. Along with that, we ended up developing a community there at Fish Hut Park. About a hundred and twenty-five single-family homes. Forty-five apartments. And then eventually some H two A housing along with a daycare center. Gymnasium, community center, convenience store. And the residents there named it Vista Hermosa. But county regulations, of course, we couldn't sell those homes. They had to be all rentals. So we we wanted to provide a chance for some of the people to become homeowners. And we looked in Tri-Cities, East Pasco, particularly because we were looking for the most underserved part of the Tri-Cities that we could find. Of course, that was East Pasco at that time. That was about twelve years ago. And the land we bought there was vacant land, had never been used between two wrecking yards. You can kind of see it on the north side of A Street there. North side of A Street there. And ended up building or plotting lots out for about a hundred and two hundred and thirty homes and a hundred and twenty apartments. Along with the recreation center and our our family foundations and Brochi Family Trust is housed there. So at that time, yeah, there wasn't there wasn't much there except for the two wrecking yards. Now, this land is just to the south of A Street. They were proposing to build another community in. It's about two and a half times as large as Tierra Vida. And it would be a similar type community with single-family housing, blend of some duplexes and apartments, along with some small business, retail business. It is zoned industrial now. A lot of that land has been bought and developed by Amazon. We sold part of that land to Amazon. And they, you know, they understood we were going to try to develop the land to the west of them as residential. So they built a sound barrier wall and landscaped it on the on the west side of their building. You know, Lakeview Community has been a very, very underserved neighborhood for probably fifty years. So that's that scenario we've always been interested in trying to see if we can somehow better better come alongside them too. So we were, we were, I guess, proud to be able to partner with Pasco School District Superintendent Michelle Whitney on getting the Early Learning Center put into Lakeview Community. And it just started up this year. So anyway, we we're not really developers, but we if we do build a community, we stay with it. We don't just build and make a profit and walk away. And I think we can mitigate with the industry because they're there. Amazon's going to be pretty clean as far as industry goes. And there's a lot of longtime residences that live north of A Street that have been there for forty to fifty years. And they'd rather see more housing going and more industry. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there any questions, Mr. Brochi? There are questions. Councilwoman March, Councilwoman Serrano.
In the staff report for your application to include this in the the Comp Plan Amendment, I'll I'll read it directly from here. It says, "The city has expressed concern about the loss of industrial land, the conversion of industrial lands, and the impacts to current industrial users." And so, Mr. Brochi, you had mentioned that you or your family had sold some of the industrial land to Amazon. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, the I'm sorry, the the ninety acres just to the west of the parcel that we're talking about developing.
Just to the west or to the east?
Uh, east, I'm sorry, east.
To the east, okay. And so, Amazon was aware of the desire for Brochi's to build a residential neighborhood neck adjacent to it.
Uh, they were, and that's why they agreed to build the sound barrier wall and landscaping on that side of their building.
Okay. And I didn't see in our packet anything from Amazon opposing this. Is that accurate, staff? Is there anything, any letters from Amazon? No? Let's see a head shake, no.
Right.
So, Mr. Brochi, what I know about the Tierra Vida community is that you did build it, your family built that on the east side in an area that was entirely underdeveloped except for industrial uses that were not adjacent, except for maybe the the flea market at that time up to the north.
That's right.
And you said something that was really significant to me, which is that, like so many developers, and we come across a lot of developers, including the one that was representing you here last time you came to the city council, that build neighborhoods. They just throw up houses and then they go. You've built a community in which the even the Lakeview neighbors come up to the north and use your community service, the rec center, after-school programming. And so I would just like to ask you, is it your intention to build a similar community in this proposed area?
Uh, yes, it's it'll be similar, it won't be identical. We've learned a few things from our adventure with Tierra Vida. It's been exciting. Yeah, and our our Family Trust and Foundations are housed there, so we'll be there long term.
And how do you foresee the, I guess, the neighboring of a residential community next to industrial to the immediate east? How do you foresee that impacting the residential neighborhood?
Well, I think it's pretty light, light industrial use that's gone in there. And, you know, most most of the pre-venting wind is is downwind from the community that we'd be putting in there. And, you know, we'll have we'll have landscaping and and trees to kind of buffer any industrial on on either side of the community.
Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to add to the environmental impact statement and the the finding of adverse environmental impacts? Was there anything you wanted to say in regards to that that was given to us as part of our consideration?
I think we updated a little bit, but, yeah, it's still it's still a work in progress. But I think, yeah, we'll do everything we can to mediate and be good neighbors to the surrounding developments. And I think industrial land in that area is pretty well designated, what's going in there. To the south of Amazon, that Tarragon's going in there and that'll be a warehouse thing. So as far as it looks like, there won't be any manufacturing or or medium industrial activities.
Do you own the two parcels south of the the red boundary there?
Uh, yeah, the two parcels just south of the the red outline part, that's our property too.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have for you.
Councilwoman Serrano?
Thank you, I'm going to turn my attention to staff. Not that I'm ignoring you, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Brochi, and I appreciate what you've done for the community. Mr. Gonzalez, you've indicated that one, two things. One, you kind of foresee this as a no pass presently. That is your recommendation or staff's recommendation is to to not advance this. Do you foresee the ability to have and receive the information that you believe or staff believes is necessary to potentially modify that recommendation over the next, I think we have till the seventeenth of April, twenty-eight days-ish?
Uh, can you repeat the first question, I'm sorry?
So your current recommendation is do not, you know, do not pass this essentially, right? So the question is, do what what information do you need? And do you believe you'll be able to receive that from the applicant to change that recommendation?
We we've asked the applicant to identify what are the impacts of increasing the amount of residential households upwards of one thousand to thirteen hundred housing units or equivalent to thirty-two hundred to forty-two hundred people within the immediate adjacency to four and a half million square feet of industrial freight-based uses. The DEIS indicates that it'll be roughly around eleven hundred trips a day associated with this project. That would be in addition to the roughly ten to fourteen thousand trips associated with the freight-based users adjacent. So what staff is is expressing concern about is what are the impacts of that additional freight? The air quality, the public health implications, the safety and the transportation system for residents? Not only to the residents that may live in this proposal, but to the residents that live already north on A Street, including residents at Tierra Vida. We because these operations are not in place yet, we are not certain about what those actual implications are yet. And staff will continue to express concern about the public health implications of this because we do not know what would happen. Typically, planning, when we receive or look at proposals like this, the the way to mitigate it is to not allow it. This is also part of the concurrent consideration of all the applications as a whole. I think this council has been instrumental in advising staff and guiding staff to develop better housing solutions and to increase access to housing types of multiple varieties. We've been recognized for that and will continue to do that for the city. But the intent of all that is to increase access to housing so that we never end up in a situation where the only place left for housing is within the immediate proximate proximity of four and a half million square feet of freight-based industrial users. So we're not sure what the next iteration of the draft EIS will include. We've expressed our concerns and requests to the applicant. Assuming that those concerns are addressed in some form or manner, considering the other fifteen associated items this year, along with our criteria based on which we're supposed to make a staff recommendation, staff would likely still yield a recommendation of denial on this proposal.
I I appreciate that, and that's well said. I mean, I I think, again, I'll reiterate what I said, I believe, last week. Tierra Vida's been a heck of a success. I'll I'll pause to say what I'm really thinking. It's been a tremendous asset to our community. I I believe, you know, Deputy Chief Cook can probably attest to the the presence that PD has there and how that's been beneficial to the community. I'm not going to put words in your mouth, certainly if you have comments, you're welcome. But obviously, this this would be an asset in a lot of ways. Go ahead.
From the PD side, Tierra Vida has been unique in its partnering and its its community. I think it, obviously, it's not the space, but as a community, it has been a good partner with us.
Yeah, and and I would anticipate, Mr. Brochi, then, that you'd have a similar relationship or that would be the hope of this new project, correct? If you'll re-touch the mic. Your mic's off. Sorry, it's okay.
Yeah, definitely, that would be our goal is to maintain a safe, healthy community. And, you know, I think that the Road Forty East, the plan is to run it on north to meet up with Lewis Street. So a lot of the, hopefully, a lot of the truck traffic will take that route out to Lewis Street and onto the freeway rather than exiting onto A Street and going going west that way. That would divert a lot of the heavy truck traffic.
Well, hopefully, you can convey some of that information through the next draft EIS because, you know, I I think we've got some very critical infrastructure coming in through the Amazon and those facilities and the industrial process. But again, you've been one heck of a partner to the city of Pasco and a tremendous asset. I don't. I I would hate to lose it just because I know how successful your your community is. So, one, I applaud you and thank you for your efforts. And, two, my hope is that when you come back or when staff comes back in a month, we'll have found some solutions to improve the analysis. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
I do want to add one thing, Mr. Brochi, that you forgot. Your Vista Hermosa community has a church and a clinic and a school. So again, thank you to the Brochi family for everything you do for the underserved communities. And Tierra Vida as well has a school. And I I took a little tour and I think you were there. Definitely, your your kids were the ones that gave me a little tour of the facilities along with Adon. My concern is, we do have a letter, I don't know if you all saw it, we do have a letter in regards to the truck traffic. This letter basically states the same thing everybody's been asking in regards to the quality of life. The impacts can be written, basically, it says verbatim. These impacts can be disruptive to residential communities. So that is definitely a concern, but I do applaud the work that you do. I do hope that there's that we can work with staff and figure out the best way to where we can cohabitate and work with you to figure out the best way to move this forward, if that's the route that we're going to go. If not, then again, figure out a way to bring that housing to allow all the changes that need to happen to make this happen.
Well, thank you. Yeah, housing is housing is a big need on the on the east side. That's where a lot of the jobs are being developed and but no, no space to build additional housing in the east side except for this particular piece of ground. Thank you for your time.
Oh, Mr. Brochi, if you don't mind, mayor.
Go ahead.
I did have a kind of question. I know in my former district, by the Coke facility, they had a lot of issues with the, of course, it wasn't a sound wall, but there was a fence and then people complained that the trucks were running or trucks came in late at night. Are you, I know you said that there's the wall, I haven't been out there, but there is a wall. How, what's the distance if this goes through where you would put the apartments or the buildings, the houses? Where, what would be the the distance between that wall and the buildings that you're are proposing?
Uh, right now, Amazon left a fifty-foot barrier on on their side. So we would we would plant additional trees along there with some some trails and and, yeah, keep keep the separation there. The the way their building is set up, most of their truck traffic is is on the on the south side of the building, some on the north side. And their exit is out to Fortieth, so away from our development.
Okay, I I know that I I've always heard a lot of really good things about you and I know you're quite the stand-up leader in our community. And I would say, on another note, it would, if you have a housing development like this, hopefully bring a lot more business to our downtown part where people want to go and and, you know, have food and, you know, restaurants and like that. So I think anytime we could have very nice housing developments in the east part of Pasco, I think it's going to encourage people to shop in in the downtown, at least that's what I would hope. So I I do commend you on your efforts, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Mr. McBaden? And I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Look, you just turned it off. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Stephen McBaden and the Director of Economic Development for the Port of Pasco. Randy Hayden, the Executive Director, is the most articulate one in our team. He's currently in Washington, DC advocating for the dams on the Snake and the Columbia River. So I've been asked to step in for him. So first and foremost, the Port Commission is officially neutral on the proposal, but we would like to offer our perspective on the proposed change for the site. Housing availability and affordability is a critical need in Pasco to support our growth and the new industrial jobs being added to our community. This project could help meet that demand. The need for affordable housing, however, is balanced and should be balanced by the other characteristics of this property and the adjacent properties, including the Port of Pasco site at Big Pasco Industrial Center along Amesworth to the direct south of the proposed development. The property has been designated and zoned industrial for decades, predating even the residential rezoning of Tierra Vida and the other residential zones on the north side of A Street. Significant investment has gone into preparing the site for industrial development, including widening A Street and providing truck-ready pavement on A Street and Road Forty East, adding industrially-sized water and sanitary sewer along A Street to the south of the property, adding an industrial rail spur funded funded through state funds adjacent to the southern edge of the property, adding Heritage Boulevard as a direct connection to Highway Twelve from the former Heritage Industrial Park, rezoning the frontage of this property along A Street as commercial from industrial to act as a buffer to the residential use on the north side of A Street. The surrounding property has seen sizable industrial development in the past few years, including construction of the Amazon projects, also Local Bounty, and the plans for Tarragon to construct two-point-five million square feet of leasable warehouse. In our opinion, there would very likely be other industrial users that would locate at the property if it remains designated for industrial use. The industrial investment provides property tax, sales tax, and utility taxes to help support city services and schools. The port welcomed early outreach by the developer to gather our thoughts on the proposal. Although we believe industrial use is the preferred approach, we did understand and do understand the need for housing. We offered impact input that if the property ultimately is reclassified for residential use, there should be pockets of light industrial similar to Commercial Avenue or the Foster Wells Business Park that further cements the work-live proximity. We do not see that those light industrial pockets have been included in the plan. And as my time runs out, I'd like to conclude with repeating that additional and affordable housing is a real and serious need in Pasco. This site could help that address that need, but there may actually be more suitable locations within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you'd like to state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening, Lorhan, Director of Sustainability with Local Bounty. I personally live in Seattle, Washington. I've been with Local Bounty since twenty twenty-one, and as a Washington State resident, I'm very excited to see the company growing into the state. The company is an innovative indoor agriculture business that specializes in lettuce varieties, and we have a core value of being a good neighbor. When we selected our site in Pasco, we and started this whole permitting process. We thought that we are really well-located, having other industrial neighbors nearby. We knew that we wouldn't be causing negative impacts. We're now tens of millions of dollars into a process of building our business in the city, and we're really hoping to open operations this calendar year. As we move really from that construction to the operation side, we're looking to hire local talent, build a local team, and really create a workforce that we are creating jobs that we're proud of. We are in support of the city staff's recommendation not to approve this proposal. The zoning change would alter the composition of the users near our site. We definitely understand that there's a housing shortage happening and the city is looking for solutions. We acknowledge the importance of safe housing, but we believe that building new residential in the midst of new industrial just is really not the most appropriate solution. As you know, industrial operations have noise, they have truck traffic. And for us particularly, we bring in the unique aspect that we have three acres under glass with lights. And so we bring a whole lot of light pollution that just is not seen by some of the other industrial users. We think this is going to have a quality-of-life impact if we put residential in close proximity to us. And we're asking council to consider the best way to balance really these needs of housing and industrial users and how to expand in a way that's really best for everyone. I would definitely ask council to think about processes and how we go about making these changes in the city. You know, if if residential properties next to industrial is really the best solution for Pasco. You know, if, if residential properties next to industrial is really the best solution for Pasco. So in conclusion, you know, we'll ultimately support whatever decision council comes to. We do ask that if this project moved forward, a lot of time and attention is spent on how we mitigate those impacts between industrial and residential. And at the end of the day, we want to be a good neighbor. We want to be growing in this community and we're excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Sorry, if I, if I may ask the last speaker one question?
Sure.
So just for the benefit of everyone, I'm, I'm currently on the Kelly Auditor site, so I'm clicking through parcels to make sure I know who's, who's where.
Yeah.
Am I correct in understanding that basically the leftmost portion of that picture in the, in kind of the undeveloped land, there is Local Bounty's space?
Yes, where the arrow is.
Great, thank you. And so that is adjacent to, to the requested update to the comp plan?
Correct. There's two parcels that are directly up against us. Elm Street will eventually run in between the two of them, so we'll be on either side of Elm Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Hearing none. Sorry, second call for any public comment. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Mayor Barajas, members of city council. My name is Ryan Brought. I live in Tierra Vida at six-one-seven Esperanza Court. My wife and I moved to Tierra Vida in two thousand and ten. And we are privileged in that we could have chosen to live anywhere. However, we were inspired to be part of an intentional community that was more than just a group of houses. Since moving to Tierra Vida, we've adopted three children and in the process of adopting a fourth, we've made lifelong friends with our neighbors and we've experienced a sense of community that we haven't experienced in any other neighborhood that we've lived in. This is the place that we've chosen to live and raise our children, and it's one of the best decisions that we've made. Our, our kids' best friends are our neighbors and we don't have any plans of, of going anywhere. In fact, in two thousand and twenty, we, we completed a significant remodel to accommodate the growth of our family and so that we wouldn't have to leave the place that we've grown to love. I understand the concerns of being located near an industrial area, but the reality is across the street from where these trucks are, are traveling down A Street is the Tierra Vida community and my home. The environmental impact and the impact of adding additional industrial development would have more impact on the current residents nearby such as my family and the families visiting with their children to play soccer on the fields soon to be created than if the proposed amendment were adopted and this land were developed as residential or commercial use. Due to the fact that our community is, is just about full, there's a need, as we've heard tonight, there's a significant need for additional housing. And so there's a need to change zoning to allow for that. Just as we saw unanimous support of this proposal with the Planning Commission, I would expect the, the same result here tonight. All of you have a tremendous opportunity to support the continual work that's being done to change lives and change the trajectory of East Pasco and, and really build true community. So again, thank you for your consideration and your vote and support.
Thank you. Third and final call.
And by the way, my, my friend Gracie might not mention it, but she came here tonight and spent her birthday with all of you, one of my neighbors. So you may get a chance to hear from her shortly.
Third and final call.
Good evening.
If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Justin Bearlocker. I'm with JEB Engineers, Kennewick, Washington. We are, helped the applicant with the application and providing the, the application and the EIS and is working with staff on this process. We've been continually working with staff and getting this EIS completed and, and doing our best to respond quickly to any, any requests that they have. The draft was prepared in September, went out for comment. We've addressed comments and had a, a revised draft back to city in January. With that note, I'd like to identify that in the staff report, there was a reference to Exhibit D, which is the draft environmental impact statement. After reviewing that in your packet, it was dated December and staff had come back with comments for us to respond to. And so we have actually submitted an updated version in January. So there's a discrepancy there on which EIS they're, they're reviewing and commenting on. And we'll continue to work with staff to get these comments addressed. One thing I wanted to identify is the, the land use and the compatibility around it. Similar to this exhibit you guys have, we've identified, you know, where the proposed amendment area is and how it, how it compares land use-wise. We don't feel like this is a change in, in the land use configuration in the area. And in fact, it's, if, if we look at the, the intensity of an, of residential and mixed-use commercial versus industrial, it's actually less impactful to the surrounding area than the industrial is and providing less truck trips. So we have the mixed-use area, we have the proposed new city park, which we would try and integrate with the development. The development would also have park space, walkable community. And then there's Amazon over here, Tarragon. And as the applicant mentioned, they own the property to the south, which is industrial. So that's, that's staying as industrial. Amazon, the, the portion to the very east is zoned I-1 and the Grow Bounty property is also zoned I-1. In the Pasco City Code, it says an I-1 zone should be compatible with any land use within the, within the city. So that should be compatible use with any residential if you can mitigate. So I'd like to leave it with that. One last comment. Amazon, the, the wall that we spoke of earlier that they built, and then there's a fifty-foot buffer. If, if they knew that industrial user was going in next to them, that's not a requirement. They're not required to do it to the south. They're only required to do that against a residential development. So. Do you have any further questions?
Is there any questions? Mr. Brown?
Um.
Councilmember.
The map that you have, it's, thank you, Mayor. The map that you have, is staff aware of this map?
Yes, it was included in the Planning Commission. When we went to the Planning Commission, it was adopted in a document. It's in your packet too as well, with our response comments.
No, thank you. So for me, I would, I would kind of recommend that there be more conversation with you all and staff so that we could really get some clarification on what's going on, because it seems like your information is new.
No, it's not new. It's been a while. And I guess I'd like to make that point is we're, we've been working with staff, meeting their guidelines and been coming back with more comments later on. And now we're at the, at this point in the process of, well, you only have a few weeks to, to respond to a comment. And we, we would, we'd like to be able to work with them to, to find the solution to get this to go through.
Okay, thank you. Just hold tight to that recommendation. I think communication is the key to success and it has to be a lot of communication on this. Like I said, when you pull the map up, it seemed slightly new information versus what we have here.
No, it's all, it's in your, it's in the packet today that you have for the, for the city council meeting.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Converse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Gonzalez, can you talk about that discrepancy in there? It sounds as if you've received a new EIS. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, and staff certainly apologizes for that discrepancy. That, that doesn't necessarily, there were some of the comments that staff had responded to the applicant in early March, March third, that have been in some ways addressed by the, the DEIS that was shared and submitted in early January. But again, staff, staff has still expressed and will express that the DEIS that was submitted in January does not identify the implications of the development that is not yet complete and the impacts on new residential growth in the immediate proximity. There's been a lot of discussion about the, that new industrial growth may have less, will have more of an impact than the switch to residential. Staff would again like to reiterate that those ten to fourteen thousand vehicles are not yet up and running. But they will be eventually and we do not yet know what those implications will be on, certainly not future users, but, but to an extent, we don't know what those consequences or harms may be on nearby residential homes either.
Follow-up then on that note, it sounds as if the conversation's steering towards whether or not we could say the same for any industrial project that's put in there. So the city would then, just on what I'm hearing, would make a recommendation to also not, never, never mind. It wouldn't work out that way because it would fit the comp plan. I'm good. Answer my own question.
The, the mitigations would, would be where staff would have to really be careful and deliberate with what mitigations are necessary from future industrial users on the impact, obviously to the level of service of the infrastructure, but certainly to those residents that are adjacent or that already exist. That is one of the difficulties and explains some of the, the time that it's taken to review the elements of the DEIS is that the current municipal code is pretty, pretty bland in terms of offering solutions to mitigations associated with a project of this magnitude and of this, of this size. So we don't necessarily have the, the tools within the Pasco Municipal Code right now to mitigate. Those will be a concern that staff will have to bring to future applicants associated in this area or interest in this area for future development.
Okay, thank you.
You, Councilwoman Roque?
Mr. Gonzalez, I, I actually have more question for staff and so I'm listening to the representatives from Bounty. I am interested in understanding, so we do have prospective soccer fields going in, sandwiched in between Bounty and the Brochi Orchards property. What is that land currently zoned?
I will have to find the zoning on that. We are building the soccer fields, but I'm not.
Well, the, the zoning is industrial and parks, churches, many uses are are located regardless of zoning. They're through a conditional use permit process.
Oh, it doesn't, it's regardless of the fact that it's an industrial zone? Okay. All right. I just wanted to ask that question. Mayor Potambloni?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. This is another question for, for staff as well. Changing the comp plan is one element on which we control the growth of the city, what goes where and how we mitigate the potential impacts of that growth and how it fits together. There would have to be a further rezone of this property. And there's an application process where it needs, needs to be evaluated by this, by the city and by, I think, Planning Commission goes through a process or the hearing examiner, hearing examiner, thank you, where they, where they're looking for compatible uses and such. And then ultimately, I believe that rezone comes in front of council like we haven't, is that, or is that this is a site-specific rezone where it's entirely within hearing examiner? There's a lot of processes here. Could you just briefly explain where, if, if this were to be approved, where would it go from here? Like what are the additional controls in place from here to there?
Yeah, with any of the proposals this evening, in this particular case, if approved and if the applicant would like to propose a residential or like commercial use, they would apply for a site-specific rezone. That rezone requires its own environmental process that is a public hearing with the hearing examiner and then taken to, in front of city council or final decision. I don't have all of the criteria about rezone process on, already this evening, but I, I do know that one of the difficulties we may run into is staff aligning the intent or the application itself of a rezone in this particular case, we would have to, or the applicant would have to identify what are the changing environments that require the zone change. And so that would, it, it, it may lead to more further difficult discussions and conversations, certainly with the hearing examiner, then it would be back here again.
Great, thank you. And then if once it's been, even if it were to go through the comp plan change, the rezone, and then the next step would be when you're actually designing it out, there's another review where you look at mitigative impacts based on the layout, what's, what's going to be built where, what the impacts are to the roads. There's another further administrative portion where we look at mitigating some.
Yeah, both administrative and depending on the application type, it might end up in front of the hearing examiner again. And again, depending on the, the nature of the, the permit associated with the project. If it's a preliminary plat with thirty units, or if it's a multifamily project, or if it's a couple of stores, those applications themselves would still require a CEPA checklist, an environmental checklist. Staff would have to ensure that the results of that checklist, similar to the Broadmore Plan later on for this evening, are all aligned with the EIS, prepared for the overall site itself. The alignment with the sort of parent environmental document.
Great, thank you. I think that's all the questions I have at this time. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Ms. Gracie, you had some comment? You want to turn on your microphone? And before you start, happy birthday. Thank you for spending it here.
Thank you. Best birthday present ever. So, good evening, Mayor Barajas, City Council and city staff. My name is Gracie Vaichiman and I live at thirty-seven oh-two Milagro Drive. And I wore many hats in the community, but today I'm going to wear my hat as a Tierra Vida resident, the HOA president of the Tierra Vida community and also as a scout mom. And so you guys pretty much took on my speech because I was just going to tell you a little bit about, I moved into a vision back as a teen in nineteen ninety-two in a community called Vista Hermosa, which used to be called El Rancho de las Vivas, which translates to the ranch of the snakes, because there's a lot of snakes. And so that was an intentional community by a dream to help people by the Brochi family. And it was, and what I loved about that is that that community was built organically. So the people that worked in the warehouses needed a home, so houses were built. The community needed a gas and so a gas station was built and so on and so forth. They needed a school, a school was built. They needed a daycare that was built. So obviously fulfilling the homes and the needs of the community there. But what I loved about it, every morning when I was going to high school, is I would see families walk from the homes to the orchard or walk to the manufacturing warehouses where they lived. And so that was pretty cool, just to see family networking and building relationships while they're going to work. Because that's very common in the Hispanic community in Mexico that unless you have money for the bus, you would just walk to where you would work. So finding places where homes are nearby working location was ideal. And obviously years later, about eighteen years later, once again, I see it happen again with the Tierra Vida community and so now I'm back. And I live in that community and I love the fact that it's an intentional community. And the focus there is all to build relationships. And we also build trust and serve in leadership as one of our key roles in that community. And I love that they have after-school programs to really help families. And my kids do scouting at Tierra Vida. So obviously you guys know Tierra Vida. And to my understanding, I've been told we have the best national night out event there where we celebrate city and police officers and all our first responders. And so it is a very thriving community that I'm honored to be a part of. And so when I heard that they wanted to do a sister city right down the street, I was super thrilled for them to take part on that task. Because it is a task, but it is a wonderful task to be a part of, to be able to be surrounded by community members that were strangers, but now they're family or friends. So what I just wanted to say that if you want East Pasco to continue thriving, building these types of communities, and even though we understand that it's around next to businesses, industrial, but I just see it as a win-win. The families move there, they get to work there and just break bread. It would just be amazing. So please consider the Jubilee Foundation under the Brochi Family Trust to build another intentional community so Pasco can continue to thrive. Thank you. And with that, we have somebody else. He's a Spanish speaker. He's my dad and he wanted to say a few words, so I will assist as his translator, interpreter. He's like, they gotta have a strong voice. Um so you guys can hear him, so I can translate for him. I told him he has to be by the mic because they're recording. My name is Federico Valle, live at thirty-seven oh two Milagro Drive in Pasco. Um he started off at Broche Orchards out of Vista Hermosa Community in Pasco. I was little. I was fourteen. Oh, I'm gonna start crying. So he's saying that um, okay, hopefully I get more than three minutes. Um that this is an example of well of what the Broches did, investing in children, cuz now look at where I'm at now. And and it helped the migrant families. But only two things I wanna say. That um once upon a time I was the housing development manager out at Vista Hermosa. And he had to go shopping and buy material for the homes. And so he told Mister Ralph Broche, it is way cheaper to buy in Pasco than to go to Walla Walla. But Ralph said, but I want to help Walla Walla. So then I stopped shopping around for prices. So I would go and purchase. I would give the receipts to the secretary. And I would pay for price. But after thirty years. Now the Broches wanna do something in Pasco. So when he speaks and he says he wants to help something, he wants to put it all in there and invest. I don't think he has changed his mind as far as helping. So wherever Ralph puts his heart, he places his heart to help and serve the community. So if that helps in any way, please meditate on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? If you can turn it on.
Why just turn off? Uh Daryl Moore with J U B Engineers um helped put together the D I S. They dropped environmental impact statement in application for the applicant and just wanted to, there's a lot, a lot said, there's a lot in your packet. Um it's a great project for the community, but so get to the specifics of of impact as far as compatibility or air quality um or the issues. And we're working with the city to address those questions. We've actually just resubmitted. Additional, the city had comments back in the first of March. We resubmitted updates to that um last week. So we're working with them to get those issues resolved. Um as far as overall impacts with the project, um if this project does not go forwards, it'll be industrial. So the impacts are, you'll have more trucks on the roads, which the city's already expressed concerns over with the existing residents. Um you have the city park. It's a twenty-eight acre sports complex with ten soccer fields. Um that attracts a lot of people. Um so having those industrial impacts with those types of projects, that doesn't work. Residential does work. Um residential also take trick trips off the roadway network. Um Interstate eighty-two, SR twelve. Instead of people driving from West Pasco, there'll be locally here and their their trips won't be as much. So the impacts are uh less significant than industrial user. Um as far as air quality components, reviews of the CPAs for Amazon, Tarragon. Um and city park project didn't mention anything about air quality issues on those projects. So the only air quality issues are emissions from vehicles, which is a known thing. There's vehicles all over the place. You have interstate traffic on Interstate eighty-two with semis going up and down the inner into corridor, SR twelve. You have residents that live along those highways. It's the same type of situation. Um so I just wanted to express a couple of those items. Um and as far as uh impacts to existing industrial users, if residential goes in, the, as you can see, the project takes up the bulk of the remaining portion of the land, uh the industrial land. Um property to the south is owned by the applicant. Amazon um has a large barrier wall with a fifty-foot buffer landscape strip. Uh Tarragon on their CEP application mentioned a twenty-five-foot uh landscape buffer on their project. Uh local bounty will have South Elm extend down, which acts as a buffer and um they'll have the sports complex in between the local bounty and the residential component. So um as far as impacts, there's no other big industrial user that's gonna happen that on this project. Um if the residential component goes in. So um impacts to existing industrial users are are limited. So I just wanna make those points out. So if there's any questions, let me know.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, thank you. Any other comments on this matter? Seeing none, Mister Gonzalez, would you like to introduce the next one?
Sorry, Ma- Mayor Barajas, I'm sorry, I thought we got enough to you after that public comment.
Correct, yes. It's been a long one.
Yeah, it has. Um just a a question, uh again, another question on process. Um with the en- environmental impact statement, um this body, the council here, does not approve that, right? This is a, this this city staff determine when that is done? Can you, can you help me understand who the uh approval authority is on the im- um environmental impact statement?
Yep, typically what will happen is after the uh yeah, the draft D I S addresses comments associated with the draft itself. Um uh the uh final E I S is typically required to be issued within sixty days of the end of the last comment period. Uh which would have put this a couple of weeks ago. Um unless uh the proposal is of complex or unusual nature, which staff has deemed this to be complex and or unusual uh in the nature of the proposal. Um so at this point, uh it's kind of a back and forth between uh the applicant um addressing comments and concerns from the staff until those can be uh fully identified. Um but there is no guarantee in any D E I S that if final E I S is issued, a lead agency, a city, or whoever the lead agency uh may be, in this case, it is the city of Pasco, uh could always deny uh the F E I S uh just due to the nature of the uh of the uh uh environmental impacts associated with the proposal, meaning that they cannot be mitigated.
I will, let me ask an awkward question. Who by name is the approval authority in the city of Pasco?
Uh the CIPA official is Director of Community and Economic Development.
Thank you. That's the only question I have.
Any further questions with council? If you can introduce the next one.
All right, uh.
Mister Gonzalez, sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you real quick. We're requesting a five-minute break. So it's nine forty-one to return at nine forty-six.
Thank you.
Thank you again for giving us that five-minute break. Uh Mister Gonzalez, let's pick it right up.
Yes, um and if council is interested, I can continue to run through each application. I know there's other folks interested in participating in public hearings this evening. And so I I if it's appropriate, um would would it be appropriate to ask uh others in the audience if they would like to speak to the matter um that they're here for? Or would you like me to run through each of the applications? And I and I certainly do both.
Let's run through each uh item and allow for comment at the end.
Will do. So uh this is an item for a land use amendment of approximately thirty-two point three acres. Uh it is located uh northwest of uh Broadmore Boulevard and Burns Road. Uh the proposal is from low-density residential to medium-density residential. Um medium density, medium-density residential allows variety of residential uh zoning districts. Um again, uh with the other proposals, a determination of non-significance was issued by the city uh in June of twenty twenty-two. And based on the criteria of the comprehensive plan, uh staff recommends approval um of this item.
Do you have any questions, comment from council on this particular item? Seeing none, Mister Gonzalez, next one. No, we're gonna do that at the end.
Uh this is a proposal uh located on Burns Road, east of Road sixty-eight, to amend the comprehensive plan from commercial to mixed residential and commercial. A determination of non-significance was issued in June of twenty twenty-two on this matter. Uh you may recall this item from the comprehensive plan and urban growth area discussions back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Um staff is uh communicating with the uh with the applicant and um the intent of this uh during the comprehensive plan process was to uh keep a portion available for commercial development uh due to the amount of residential dwellings, both existing and those that would be proposed. Uh in the immediate vicinity, there is a uh public high school uh that is uh near, uh will start construction soon uh to the immediate east of the site. Um however, based on the criteria of the comprehensive plan, uh staff uh supports uh this proposal, assuming uh with the intent that during the rezon process, a portion of it uh would remain available for commercial development.
Is there any comment, Councilwoman Roach?
Just one uh question for you. When, for clarification, commercial to mixed residential and commercial, is that, does that include all types of residential, low-density to high-density and everything in between?
It does, R one through R four, so it could be a detached single-family home or apartments or townhomes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further comment from council?
Seeing none, next one.
Uh this next proposal is to amend the comprehensive plan feature land use map from commercial to mixed residential commercial. The site is approximately two and a half acres. It is located uh just south of Wrigley Drive and north of Burden uh Boulevard. Uh in between um east of Road sixty-eight and Convention Place. Um the uh applicant um uh is not sure uh what their end uh application would be. However, they have in- in- uh indicated that uh the mixed residential commercial offers the most flexibility due to its um uh the uh allowance of multiple residential zoning districts and uh retaining it as commercial as well. Uh based on the criteria of the comprehensive plan, staff would recommend support of this proposal.
Thank you. Is there any question, comment from council?
My comment, just to register it, is that I would prefer this to remain commercial.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, can we go, move ahead?
Uh this is a proposal uh located uh on This is a proposal located on Chapel Hill Boulevard, just east of St. Thomas Drive, sorry, west of St. Thomas Drive. The proposal is to amend the future land use map from commercial to mixed residential and commercial on approximately four and a half acres of land. Determination of non-significance was issued in June of two thousand and twenty-two, and based on the criteria of the comprehensive plan, staff would recommend is supportive of the proposal.
Thank you. Do we have any question, comment from council? Seeing none, let me get the next one.
This is a proposal to amend the comprehensive plan feature land use map, about twenty acres from low-density residential to mixed residential and commercial. The site is located in between two other potential comprehensive plan land use amendments and to the immediate north of the Broadmoor Master Planning Area. The site is currently vacant. Like the other proposals, the mixed residential and commercial land use allows variety of zoning districts from light commercial to single-family detached homes, to apartments or townhome housing products. The applicant has expressed that they're in no hurry for this project, but the mixed residential and the commercial project allows them to react to what happens, both in Broadmoor and the surrounding properties, in a way that's more flexible for them. Based on the criteria of the comprehensive plan, staff would recommend is supportive of the proposal.
Thank you. Is there any question, comment on this particular item? Seeing none, can we get the next one?
This is a proposal to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan from commercial to high-density residential. The site is located just north on Court Street on Twenty-eighth Avenue. To the immediate west is US three ninety-five. The determination of non-significance was issued in June of two thousand and twenty-two. Staff emphasizes that this particular proposal would increase the amount of residential housing in an area that is served by both restaurant, retail, and other commercial services, notes its proximity to available public transportation and proximity to multiple highway networks and the general transportation network in the city of Pasco, and the site's been vacant for, it is vacant. So based on the criteria of the comprehensive plan, staff is supportive of this proposal.
Thank you. Is there any question, comment from council, and I have Councilwoman Roach, and then Mayor Ferter Maloney.
My comment for this is while this land has been vacant, and I would love to see it developed into something, especially because of its proximity to transportation and central location, and I know that there's high density to the east of that, this is immediately adjacent to Permobil Manufacturing Factory Plant, and so just was looking for that same, even though it's not an industrial zone, it is a heavier commercial operation happening here, and looking for that consistency in staff's recommendations that, you know, we just finished talking at length about another one and how the impacts to residents will be negative placing them in an industrial zone while we're placing them next to a highway and a manufacturing plant. So I'm just registering those comments here.
Thank you. Mayor Ferter Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. I echo very much my fellow councilmember's concerns here. Not that they aren't something that can be mitigated, but I don't understand, I guess, the process between determining this to be a non-significant environmental determination when exactly those comments were putting it next to a very busy, very, very busy highway, next to heavy commercial. Is this compatible with land use and such? Those questions are often answered, or indicating they can answer with great detail in an environmental impact statement, and that we're not going through the process here. So I'm not sure I have any particular questions, but I view this with concern for those same reasons that Councilmember Roach brought up. Thank you.
Any further question, comment? Comments are noted. Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, can I get the next item?
This is a proposal to amend the comprehensive plan future land use map, approximately six point six acres located on West Court Street and Route sixty-eight from commercial to mixed residential and commercial site and commercial land use. This almost falls into a map correction land use amendment. You can see that the existing parcel has both allocated with commercial and medium-density residential. We're not certain yet what the end use may be on this site, but the amendment to commercial, mixed residential, and commercial almost is more of a map correction here, and staff is supportive of this proposal.
Thank you. Do we have any question, comment from council? Councilwoman Roach?
Just comment about commercial hopefully going on the sixty-eight facing side and Court Street facing side, in that this is one of those previous donut hole areas or River View annexation areas, if not still in that, but that you have large parcels of land of residential, and it just could get kind of messy in terms of development, and so while I can see a lot of traffic on Court and sixty-eight both happening, those homes that open up onto sixty-eight and Court have a hard time getting access onto Court and sixty-eight due to their access. So that's my comment for those, this, this application.
If staff would note that Route sixty-eight and Court Street is going through the intersection improvements right now with the roundabout project. So access management was certainly, when an application is submitted, if submitted on this site, will certainly be a significant component of the analysis done, both by the applicant and reviewed by staff.
Any further question, comment on this item? See, your comments are noted. Councilwoman Roach, can I get the next item?
Yes, we're now on to the city-initiated amendments. This is a proposal that is a direct recommendation from the recently adopted downtown Pasco Master Plan. The intent is to create and establish a land use that is specific and tailored for downtown and the surrounding area. In total, covers roughly a hundred and fifty or so acres. The intent would be to amend the current Central Business District overlay to become the new downtown Pasco overlay district. The proposal from staff aligns with the master plan strategies with updating the land use and the zoning that would be tailored specifically for downtown Pasco and central Pasco to encourage and incentivize new development, in-development, and private and public investment in the area. You can see here, difficult to see with parcels on there, but in dark red, the proposal would, part of the proposal from staff, it would keep the exemption for off-street parking, which would allow for businesses to seek establishment here, and would also remove the density maximums associated with the comprehensive plan since the densities are inherently limited by both the underlying zoning district, the underlying lot coverage of each zoning district, and also the heights, et cetera. So this allows us to have a little bit more flexibility with redevelopment or infill development in this, in the general area. This land use amendment did receive a letter of support. It was included in the packet with the, from the executive director of the Downtown Pasco Development Authority.
Thank you. Comment from Mayor Ferter Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you, Jacob, Mr. Gonzalez, my apologies. All of the changes to the comp plan would then have to be followed with a rezon. We know that there's a number of, even in our, what we consider our downtown core, there's a number of existing zones. Some of them are C three, there's, you know, R one, there's industrial, there's a lot of different zones within there. I believe I understand that the city can initiate a more of an area rezon irrespective of property owners. Is that something that would be contemplated in this case to unify that, that, you know, downtown core to C two, or is it something that would still be site by site per applicant? What's the, what is the city's thought process, or do we have one yet?
So this, this proposal doesn't change the underlying zoning district. All of the existing zoning districts would be allowed to continue as they currently do today. That was something that we shared with numerous of public comments when they received the notice in the mail. That being said, I would expect that what we will do from a staff approach to align this with the master plan recommendations, have a much more tailored approach than increasing lots that are zoned with C two or amending their current C two. I would, I would expect a much more comprehensive and community-based approach so that the end use is regulated more on form versus the nuances of the variety of uses that are allowed or not allowed in the various zoning districts, and so I would expect that the end use would be the footprint of the building, the facade of the building to an extent, height limitations, lot coverage, et cetera. I would expect that to be the end result of the downtown Pasco, a part of the implementation phase of the downtown Pasco Master Plan, which we kicked off this morning with numerous city staff and downtown Pasco Development Authority. I don't know if that answers your question sufficiently, but please let me know if that did or did not.
I think it did for this stage and what actions in front of us. Thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments from council? Seeing none, if we can get the next item?
Yes, this is the Broadmoor Master Plan application. This, this proposal actually has two items. One is the future adoption of the Broadmoor Master Plan, and the second part is adoption of the amendment associated with the master plan due to the changes of land use. This is a master plan that's been in progress for several years. It's been through several iterations, including several iterations of a draft D I S that's been out for, since two thousand and seventeen, essentially. There are, as expressed with council at the last meeting, there were well over a hundred and two specific mitigations associated with the Broadmoor Master Plan that directly indicate what kind of transportation improvements are necessary, mitigations to wildlife and natural habitat, preservation of open space, the land use. The Broadmoor Master Plan incorporates its own development regulations to implement the vision of the Broadmoor Master Plan, which are tied together with the mitigations associated with the F E I S, which was issued by staff last week. These are maps that were shown to council last week, again, identifying that the build-out of the road network doesn't, just doesn't illustrate the local access roads or all of the future roads, but certainly the, the main arteries that we will expect to have out there in the Broadmoor area, along with the associated non-motorized transportation facilities, consideration of freight, and the consideration and implementation of various park elements as well. Obviously, a lot of discussion last week about increasing and ensuring that there is adequate and sufficient park space associate, in the Broadmoor area, and staff will work towards making sure that the level of services are maintained, or if not increased, in the Broadmoor planning area.
Comment from Councilwoman Roach?
Just to echo that same thing, Mr. Gonzalez, is that what I heard myself and other councilmembers say in the, in regards to the parks, master plan is to hopefully see something other than the Corps of Engineers land in dedicated park space in this area that has access to the river. So, thank you.
Any comments or questions from other councilmembers? I understand there is a public comment on this one, however, we're trying to go down the line, and I will invite those public comments at the end of the list. Mr. Gonzalez, would you like to move on to the next one?
We are now in the map correction phase of the land use amendments. This is a land use amendment for roughly eight acres located north of A Street and Heritage Boulevard with commercial to mixed residential and commercial. There's existing residential there. The current land use is commercial. The mixed residential and commercial simply corrects that deficiency in the comprehensive plan.
Is there any questions or comments on this particular item? Seeing none, can we move on to the next one?
Another map correction. This is located on West Court Street, the southern portion between Fourteenth Avenue and Northeenth Avenue, covering roughly nine, nine acres. Again, this site, this corridor is home to several residential dwellings, and this would be an attempt to correct that map deficiency in the comprehensive plan.
Any questions or comments on this particular item? Seeing none, can we move on?
Last of the map corrections. This is located on South Tenth Avenue. The map correction is to go from commercial, that's a discrepancy, the commercial to mixed residential and commercial between West A Street and Washington Street, covering about four point two acres. Similar to the others, there is existing residential and commercial on this corridor, and the map correction would correct that deficiency in the future land use map.
Thank you. Is there any question or comment on this particular item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next one.
Yep, and this is the last one, and this, these are changes to the land use descriptions that are in the Pasco Municipal Code with both the land use and the description. The intent would be to increase the threshold for density in the low-density residential land use from two to five, to three to six. Staff, the city does still have a lot, a lot size averaging provision, which would still allow for, theoretically, you could still have two units an acre, but over an average would have to comply with this. So there's still a little bit of flexibility given, even though the threshold is raised. This would be to help facilitate what we're seeing on the permit side. It's just a significant increase to increase density across the city. Along with that, we would remove the very specific housing typologies that are mentioned throughout the land use descriptions and just identify what we really allow in the variety of our land uses, which is a variety of housing and residential development associated with the land use itself. Again, these are still need to be in conformance with the underlying zoning district and those standards as well. Again, this would incorporate the additions of both the Broadmoor planning area and the downtown land use as well.
Okay, thank you. That was the last one. Are there any questions or comments from council on any of these articles or items? Seeing none, I would like to go back and invite any public comment on any of these items. I believe we have Ms. Courtney Whitten to speak on the number CPA two thousand and twenty-two dash zero one four.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. Okay. Yes, Courtney Whitten, Winston Coucher, looking at six oh one, West Riverside in Spokane. I'm here representing American Rock Product, and my client just wanted to express their appreciation for the alteration that's in the the plan that we see here, and the accommodations that were made for their continued use of that small portion of land, fully recognizing that they'll have to apply for a conditional use permit, and are fully willing to go through that process to do so, and to support the development of Broadmoor with their business that will be located there. So I don't know if Mr. Black is still in the audience, but he is also there to answer any questions that council may have.
And he is. If you'd like to step forward, does council have any questions? No questions or comments. Thank you. All right. Is there any other public comment on any of the other items? Would you like to state your name and address for the record, please?
I really wanted to not be somebody that had to be told to hit the button. Name is Peter Harpster with Octaria Engineering. I'm here tonight representing the applicant. Our address is twenty-eight fifteen St. Andrews Loop, Suite C, here in Pasco. We're obviously in favor of Planning Commission's recommendation for approval on our application, and I wanted to speak to a couple of specific points that were brought up last week at the workshop meeting by Councilman Maloney and Councilwoman Roach. So there's the kind of general summary, and correct me if I'm wrong, was with applications like ours, which is, apologize, CPA two zero two two dash zero zero six, with applications like these going from commercial to mixed residential and commercial, there's definitely an opportunity to go a hundred percent residential or a hundred percent commercial, and council as well as staff has recognized, you know, there's a need for both. And so we haven't had official meetings with staff, but our principal engineer did have kind of a, just off-the-record discussion with Mr. Gonzalez, asking what staff would be supportive of. He indicated, and correct me if I'm wrong, something like an eighty-twenty mix, staff would be able to support eighty percent residential, twenty percent commercial. And so that is our client's intention. Of course, that could change, but that Um, of course, that could change, but that'll be our intention to submit something that staff would be supportive of instead of going a hundred percent one way or the other. Um, so with that, we'd just ask for a, a decision of approval. Um, and uh, that would give our client greater flexibility with that land area. Um, the, uh, within a one-third of a mile radius of that site, um, there's seven different zonings and so uh, or excuse me, land uses. So a lot of flexibility in that area. We're just asking for the same flexibility. Um, our application does meet the approval criteria found in PMC twenty-five two fifteen zero two zero and uh meets the intent of the twenty eighteen twenty thirty-eight comprehensive plan. And uh, as Mr. Gonzalez mentioned, they do recommend, staff does recommend approval, long as we kind of work with them on the uh, the mixture of residential and commercial.
Thank you very much. Is there any question, comments for Mr. Harpster? Seeing none, thank you again. Is, does, is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to make a comment on any of these items?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
If you can state your name and address again.
Members of the council, of course, Charles Grimm, four-three-two-one, River Haven Street. And I would like to speak to the amendment number fourteen, the master plan of Broadmore. You guys, one of the most cringy things that I hear at my business when somebody finds out where I own a business in West Pasco, is they kind of wince and say, yeah, I just really don't like driving out there 'cause the traffic is so bad. And so really, it's just an admonition to you guys, just to really try to get this right. Councilmem- or Mayor Pro Tem Maloney and um Councilmember Milney and even um Councilmember Roach, you know, discuss as far as being disappointed with um the lack of a community park there. And that really just kind of stood out to me that, you know, as much as the Road sixty-eight corridor is messed up, and I know none of you guys are probably to blame for that, here's your chance to really right a wrong out there with the, the Broadmore master plan. Build something that people want to come to Pasco for, because the Road sixty-eight area right now, people don't want to go there unless they really, really have to, you guys. This is your chance to turn this around and make about. You have a staff over there who I'm sure would love to, as Director White said, you have a wide open piece of ground there that is as large as the Pioneer Square to Seattle Center. I thought that was a great analogy. Short two irrigation circles, if I could bring that into Pasco language. Huge, huge opportunity to develop something really, really nice. And I saw the disappointment in some of your faces last week when we didn't even have a community park um into this, something like Howard Aiman, something we can be proud of as a city. So I would just, yeah, further encourage you guys to really right the wrong of Road sixty-eight, whether it be the the Road one hundred overpass there at Broadmore, whether it be the Broadmore master plan. Let's, let's do this right for, really for our city, the future and where we're going. So, thank you.
Excuse me, just one quick question for the previous commentary, if that's okay. Um, are you, you recommending that we approve this or modify this? I'm sorry, I'm not sure I had a takeaway of what you
Sure, um, I, I would modify it. Is, and I noticed that um you had moved agenda item forty-three twenty, item E, and Milney seconded at the beginning of the meeting to talk about the um open spaces and parks and that kind of stuff. And yes, I would just say, you know, we have a third of a billion-dollar budget here. Let's find some park space. Something, again, that we can be proud of to, you know, amend the, the master plan to make more than just Shoreline Road and that, you know, something that's like Wade Park. Wade Park's nice, but um, you know, let, let's have something that we as a community can really be proud of where people want to come to Pasco, not when they find out where my business is and say, yeah, I really don't like going out that way. We, we can, we can do this right. So, yep.
Any further questions, comments? Anyone else in the chambers uh that wishes to bring up any of the other items and make comment? Do we have anyone else online? Okay, second call for comment, for public comment on any of these items. Third and final call. Seeing or hearing no further comment on this, on, on any of these items, um do we have any other comments from council on any of these items? Hearing or seeing none, then this um public hearing is now closed. Thank you, uh, Mr. Gonzalez. Appreciate that. Um, oh, that was a long one. So, um, moving on with our agenda, item number nine.
Madam Mayor, um, I'd like to make a motion to continue few items. That's all right?
Absolutely.
Um, I move to continue items nine A and nine D. So that is the naming of uh New Park in Madison Park Neighborhood, and that is the item we took off the consent agenda to discuss the uh parks um and recreation and open spaces master plan. And I'd like to, and um and I'd like to move, to continue those items to a council meeting in the future as best determined by city staff.
Okay. Do we have a suggested date from staff? I see head shakes.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, to be determined. Thank you.
I'll second that if it needs to be.
So there's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by uh Councilman Milney. Um, all those in favor say aye. Thank you. All right, moving on to um next item on the agenda, nine B. Um, resolution number forty-three twenty-four and forty-three twenty-five, inter-agency agreement and rental agreement with Washington Criminal Justice Training Commission for the Basic Law Enforcement Academy, and we have Deputy Chief Cook.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we have these two items in front of you. Uh, we've worked and been working for the last eight months with the Criminal Justice Training Commission on bringing a basic academy here to Pasco. So, uh, I think we are in a place where we have, we are ready to go with Pasco campus for the Criminal Justice Training Commission. Uh, it is in partnership with them and all of our regional law enforcement agencies here in the tri-cities. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The academy uh will have two classes a year right now with thirty students in each class.
Do we have a built-in agreement for those classes, two classes of students to sign on with the Pasco PD?
I think we've promised not to recruit while they're here.
Okay, just checking. I saw that we got
We are doing a lot of recruiting, though.
Okay, good. Um, saw our invitation as well, so thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yes. So in addition, uh, the ribbon counting ceremony will happen in May um with the academy starting in the eighth of May.
Oh, wow. Quick turnaround.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Do we have any other questions, comments? Mayor Pro Tem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barahas. And thank you for the brevity in your report. Um, just my only question is, there was a lot of specific, very specific reimbursement language. Um, is this something where the state is sticking us with a large bill, or is this something where we think that the agreement is um equitable and fair?
I believe that the agreement is equitable and fair. It is not covering all the costs, um, but that is set um on a, on a scale statewide. Um, so we think it is fair, um, and obviously, we're gonna keep good track of that.
Great, thank you.
I bet.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Deputy Chief Cook, you know, I'm looking forward to this. I will see you there on the eighth, on the third and the eighth.
On the third.
Actually, you'll see me before that, at the Citizens Academy. Thank you so much for your presentation. Very quick and keep it in mind the time. Thanks again, uh, for presentation. Um, and with that, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barahas, I move to approve resolution number forty-three twenty-four, authorizing city manager to execute the inter-agency agreement with the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission to provide instruction and facilities for the purposes of, of hosting the Basic Law Enforcement Academy.
I'll second that. Okay, that was, there was a motion and seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. We have a second motion.
I move to approve resolution number four-three-two-five, authorizing the city manager to execute a delegated state rental agreement between the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission and the city of Pasco.
I'll second that. Seconded by Councilwoman Roach. No time to allow anyone else. Let's get this going. Perfect. There's a motion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you again. Uh, moving on to our, our next item on the agenda, item C. Resolution number forty-three twenty-six, award and acceptance of the Musco Sports Lighting National Recreation and Park Association Youth Sport Equity Grant Program Memorandum of Understanding an In-Kind Donation Agreement and Director Raca.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. There's a very detailed written report in front of you, but I'll do my best to paraphrase for the sake of time. Um, last December, we were one of twenty cities approached by NRPA, the uh National Recreation and Park Association uh to apply for this grant, and we were recently awarded that we were one of five people, um, one of five communities to get this grant awarded to us. In a sense, the NRPA will give us twenty thousand dollars to help promote their equity in sports um uh program, which would open up marketing to increase our equity in sports and recreation programs here in the city. As a part of that, the Musco Lighting Corporation will give uh one hundred thousand dollars of in-kind support to a new lighting project, essentially a hundred thousand dollar discount on a three hundred thousand dollar lighting package for soccer fields. Um, these soccer fields, uh, we've identified as part of our A Street project, which was discussed uh, uh, at length uh earlier this evening um, due to the demographic area that it meets, uh, in order to promote more, more equity sports programs um in that part of town. Um, the two hundred thousand dollars to make up for the three hundred thousand dollar lighting project is currently not identified, but should council accept this grant this evening, um, staff would look to uh reassess our capital improvement project list to appropriate the funding needed in twenty twenty-four and approach council at our mid-budget cycle at the end of the year. So, just a quick broad brush there, um, but I'm happy to take any questions to council.
Perfect. Thank you for, again, brevity in that presentation. Do you have any questions, comments? Mayor Pro Tem Maloney.
Yeah, Director Raca, thank you. This is awesome to be able to find ways of get, of making our dollar stretch further, and this is wonderful. And certainly, lighting is one of the, I've seen one of the big community needs in part, in our park facilities. Um, I did, I would note that there are um um, dates certain in this, um, in some of these agreements. Um, we believe that we can perform and meet those obligations.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Councilwoman Roach.
Want to say congratulations to staff on finding this. Thank you.
Yep, great staff. Yeah, we'll pass it on.
Thank you again. Um, seeing and hearing no further question or comment, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution number four-three-two-six, approving the acceptance of the Musco Sports Lighting and National Recreation and Park Association Youth Sport Equity Grant Memor- Memorandum of Understanding an In-Kind Donation Agreement.
There's a motion, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Wow, we're on the roll. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, we are moving on to item eleven, on the agenda, new business, non-listened. Item twelve, miscellaneous discussion.
Let's move our meetings to six P M. Please. Might be here just a hour shorter.
Well, there's a, there's a suggestion.
I hear only one no, but nobody else disagreeing here.
I'm not disagreeing with you, actually.
I think it's a conversation for a later time that I don't want to have here, but I definitely want to have the conversation.
Put it up for a discussion.
Yeah, we've talked about it a couple times at retreat, so.
Absolutely. Any other miscellaneous discussion? Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney.
Just to build on that, I believe at our last retreat, we'd asked staff to do a little bit of analysis, including talking to council members about their impacts of their personal lives and their schedules. Um, and so hopefully we can see that and then um, um, before we have a discussion, make sure there's a little bit of analysis goes into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? From council? So there's a suggestion, and I think uh Adam is writing that one down. Thank you. Um, item thirteen, executive session. I'm okay, there is a item thirteen, executive session. Um, we do have a need for executive session, actually. Uh, performance of a public employee per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero uh one G. Um, discussion uh with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero one I for fifteen minutes. It is ten twenty-eight. Help me with the math. To return at uh ten forty-three. And I will see you in a minute, or fifteen.
It is 11 o'clock. We are back from executive session and this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you everyone for joining us.